Welcome, everyone. I will call this meeting of the Somerville City Council to order. In accordance with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2023, this meeting of the city council may be conducted via remote participation. Please note that video and audio of this meeting is being recorded and may be shown live on local access government channels and on the City of Somerville website and will be available for future review. Will the clerk please call the roll?
This is roll call. Council McGlaughlin. Council Davis. Council Wilson. Council Said.
Here.
Council Scott. Council Mbah.
Present.
Council Burnley.
Present.
Council Klingon.
Present.
Council Strezzo.
Here.
Council Pineda Newfeld.
I'm here. Here, hello.
Council Ewan Campan.
Here.
With ten councillors present and one absent, we have a quorum.
Excellent, and I'm glad to see our audio issues are fixed and Council Pineda Newfeld is able to join us virtually. Pursuant to our Rule 32, let it be known that this city council salutes the flag of the United States of America and let us recall our oath to uphold the Constitution and the laws of the Commonwealth to the best of our abilities and understanding. We begin our meetings with a moment of silence. Are there councillors who wish to say a few words about members of our community? Council McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to recognize Jose Antonio, who passed away this week. He was an unhoused resident in East Somerville who unfortunately passed away, living underneath I-93. An issue that continues to persist. So I saw him around Stop &amp; Shop a lot, a very friendly person, amenable person. And it's very sad to see that we've lost another person. I'll just say that. As far as we know, this person died of natural causes. But as statistics show, unhoused people die almost seventeen, eighteen years earlier than the average citizen. So there's really nothing natural about this, unfortunately. It's another sad loss, and I hope we can do better to address this in the future. So I'd like to just remember him tonight.
Thank you, councillor. Will everyone in the chamber who's able please rise for a moment of silence? Thank you. You may be seated. So colleagues, after our public hearings, we have a few items that we're going to take up at the beginning of the agenda. The first is our Confirmation of Appointments Committee Report. We have a number of promotion and new hires in the fire department. Thank you all for being here. Then councillor McGlaughlin has an item 10.8 regarding a proposal from the mayor to use lateral hiring, and we're going to take that up. That's a presentation from councillor McGlaughlin and a discussion. And after we get through the first round of orders before the committee reports, we're going to go into executive session to discuss an ongoing litigation matter. So with that, if we could please take up the next item.
The next item is item 1.3, Approval of the Minutes of the Regular Meeting of March 14, 2024.
Seeing no discussion, that is placed on file for approval.
And the next item is item 3.1, A Grant of Location from Verizon to Install 216 Feet of Conduit in Broadway from Existing Verizon Manhole 44/74A Located at the Intersection of Broadway and Cross Street East to Existing Extonet Handhole Located in Front of 161 Broadway.
This public hearing is open. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? The floor is yours. You can unmute on your end.
Good evening, councillors. My name is Alexander Lassie Marrero. M-A-R-R-E-O. I'm an employee of Pike, P-I-K-E Telecom and Renewables LLC, an authorized contractor for Verizon and New England Incorporated. I have an ass-on to speak on their behalf about the petition in front of you this evening. Verizon is hereby petitioning the city council to place one new four-inch PVC conduit starting from existing manhole number 74A located in the intersection of Broadway and Cross Street East to run in a south-easternly direction approximately 216 feet towards existing handhole located at the intersection of Broadway and Minnesota Avenue. And also answer any questions that you might have about this petition.
Let the record show that councillor Scott is here. Is there anyone else to speak on that item? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Any questions, comments from councillors? Seeing none, that item is laid on the table for approval.
Item 3.2 is a grant of location from Cambridge Network Solutions to install a new handhole in a total of 188 feet of conduit in Mystic and Middlesex avenues from manhole 23803 at Mystic Avenue to a proposed handhole and from there to existing utility pole 213/4 located near 60 Middlesex Avenue.
This public hearing is open. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Welcome.
Good evening. Jeff Harrington from Cambridge Network Solutions, 120 Church Street, Wilmington, Mass. We're seeking permission to install a breakout of existing system. We've tried to lease as much existing conduit as we can to prevent excavation in the roadway. This is to service a new facility going in at 74 Middlesex Ave in Somerville. We need to place a manhole because we're breaking out of a power system and going to a telephone system, and we want to make sure that we meet all the requirements put on us by the power system.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? If you're here virtually, you can use the raised hand. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Are there questions, comments from councillors? Seeing none, that item is placed on the table for approval. Thank you.
And that will bring us to the first item that we're going to take out of order, which is item 6A, A Report of the Committee on Confirmation of Appointments and Personnel Matters, meeting on April 3, 2024.
Councillor McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Confirmation of Appointments Committee met. All members were in attendance. We took up a number of appointments and promotions. First, want to recognize Natasha Fraser as our new Assistant Clerk of Committees. She was approved with unanimous vote. And then we had a number of firefighter appointments and promotions that I would like to go over individually. We have many people in the audience, so maybe I can move to accept the committee report as submitted, and then I can talk about each individual firefighter.
Excellent. Discussion on the committee report. All right, so we'll roll call approval of the committee report.
On the committee report, councillor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Councill Davis.
Yes.
Councill Wilson.
Yes.
Councill Said.
Yes.
Councill Scott.
Yes.
Councill Mbah.
Yes.
Councill Burnley.
Aye.
Councill Klingon.
Yes.
Councill Strezzo.
Yes.
Councill Pineda Newfeld.
Yes.
Councill Ewan Campan.
Yes.
With all eleven councillors in favor, that committee report is approved.
Excellent. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, I'm going to call people up individually, and if people would like, you can come over here. Someone can take a photo for you while we mention you. The first candidate for appointment, which all these candidates were approved unanimously, is Sergio Rodriguez. Sergio is a graduate of Somerville High School and holds an associate degrees for Bunker Hill Community College. He said that it's always what he wants to do, to be a firefighter, and he looks forward to helping people and gaining experience in the position working as a firefighter in the city of Somerville. So I'd like to recognize Sergio and give him a moment.
It's the rubber.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. We got to do the...
You got to go in order? Okay, sorry.
Yeah, that's right. I knew that was in the room.
One moment, please. Let's recognize Kenneth Silver for the position of Deputy Fire Chief. Kenneth Silver is an Air Force veteran, a registered nurse, and holds a master's degree in public administration and emergency services. He deals with a variety of departments. He's dealt with a variety of development being built in the community and is trying to add technological changes to the fire office. He's also a senior officer, and he looks forward to taking on more responsibilities as in his position. So Kenneth Silver.
Councill McGlaughlin.
All right, thank you. Our next candidate is Derek Doan for the position of firefighter. Derek is a graduate of Somerville High School. He served in the U.S. Army and works as an electrical apprentice. He grew up in Somerville, and his parents and grandparents, they both, they all lived here, multi-generation. He's always wanted to be a firefighter and help people, and he looks forward to see what challenges the job brings. He's looking forward to learning new things and help people in the community. So Derek.
If anyone wants to come take photos, you're more than welcome to come over and do so. We're going to get started in two minutes, colleagues.
All right, let's call the roll to reestablish quorum.
This is roll call, Council McGlaughlin.
Yeah.
Council Davis.
Here.
Council Wilson.
Present.
Council Said.
Here.
Council Scott.
Present.
Council Mbah.
Present.
Council Burnley.
Present.
Council Klingon.
Present.
Council Strezzo.
Here.
Council Panada Newfeld.
I'm here.
Council Ewan Campan.
Here.
With all councilors present, we have a quorum.
Counselor Scott seeks recognition.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't do this very often, but I was just moved at the moment to, I'd like to move that the city council congratulates and applauds this new crop of firefighter positions hired and selected duly through our civil service process here in the city of Somerville.
Thank you, Counselor Scott. Any discussion on that resolution? Council would like to cosponsor. So before we move on, there's one more item from the Confirmation of Appointments Committee report that we need to address, an item that was discharged without a recommendation in the hopes that we'll just take it up right now.
Yes, indeed, and that is item 24-0016, requesting confirmation of the appointment of Anandavali Theegarian to the Public Library Board of Trustees.
Excellent, this is one that shouldn't have been in committee, should have just been approved on the spot, seeing no discussion, that's laid on the table for approval. Next item, please.
And the next item that's going to be taken out of order is item 10.8, a communication by Council McGlaughlin conveying an outline of the history of civil service hires in Somerville.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can't promise to be briefed tonight, unfortunately. So, we were informed at the last meeting that the city intends on doing lateral hires. Before I start too, I see a number of firefighters in the audience. If anybody was here for promotion and doesn't want to go home upset, please don't feel like you have to stick around because I don't want to rain on anyone's parade tonight. And no decision is being made tonight because the decision has already been made. The mayor's office has sent the memo and explained their position about hiring 12 lateral hires from other cities. And this bothers me, I'm pretty sure it bothers a lot of people around here. And it's important to me, like on a personal level, because I just see, because of a history that I'm gonna go into in a moment, but on a personal level, it matters to me because I'm a veteran, I'm a disabled veteran, I may not look it, but there's a lot of veterans I don't see, it's very difficult to get out of an extended military service without having some kind of disability. And most people at the top of firefighter police hires are disabled veterans and veterans. So anytime we circumvent the natural process of the civil service, there's a potential of discriminating against veterans. And besides the fact that this matters to me for that reason, you know, this veterans' preference is not a handout, it's not a thank you for your service, it's a recognition that you've already proven that you're willing to run towards danger instead of run away from danger, which is what our police and firefighters do on a regular basis. And that's why we give that preference. And when I got out of the Army 2008, I took the firefighter's exam, people encouraged me to do it. I saw hundreds of people just like me lining up to take this exam, paying, I believe it's $150 now, seeing people that I grew up with, seeing veterans that I know, take this exam on a Saturday, packing in, knowing that it's really a crapshoot even in its best situation. You basically have to get 100 on the civil service exam to even, like, to get prioritized very closely. And I ended up not following through on this because, one, I always thought that I'd end up here, even then, I was like, I want to be a city councillor, that's my crazy dream. And I didn't want to get in the way of other people's dreams. So when I see people who are willing to sacrifice themselves for the city, also, well, you know, police firefighters, they, they don't last as long either as it is for a regular job where someone may last 30, 40 years. We have age retirements for a reason because it takes a toll on your mind and your body. And to know that people are gonna go through with this and possibly get denied, it bothers me. And if I, so, that's why it matters to me. But before I go into real detail about this, I did want to sponsor some people who this is gonna affect directly. So we have Mike Jefferson, head of the Firefighters Union in Somerville. And then I also would like to sponsor Stephen Fleyth, who is a Somerville resident who took the firefighter's exam. So if I could recognize them real quickly.
Great, please. Please introduce yourself for our records.
Yes, Mike Jefferson, president of Somerville Firefighters Local 76. Thank you, Council McGlaughlin, thank you, Mr. President, thank you to the council as a whole. I also want to thank the members of Local 76 that are standing here tonight, as well as the residents and the candidates that are on the current civil service certification list. It's important for the council and for the city that's watching to realize it's not just a name on a list, all right? There's faces to those names, and some of those individuals are in here right now because these lateral transfers could potentially affect something that's a lifelong dream for them. And of course, I do want to congratulate, again to my remarks, Deputy Silver and the Silver family for that promotion. But I stand here tonight, once again on the record, to state that Local 76 is adamantly opposed to hiring 12 lateral transfers to fill the vacancies for the new fire station in Assembly Square. Because less than two weeks ago, 11 days ago, on April 1st, a new civil service certification list came out. There's 60 names of Somerville residents on that list. That certification list allows under law for residents' preference, which means Somerville residents, whether they were born and raised here, lived here their whole life, they've moved here and made the city their home, they are afforded the right to the first opportunity to become a Somerville firefighter. That certification list, as you just heard from Council McGlaughlin, also calls for veterans' preference. So that veterans' preference means that people who have sacrificed for their country are put ahead of the non-veterans pending they meet the residency requirement, so they are still residents of the city of Somerville. Regardless of what this mayor's office is trying to tell you, lateral hires will absolutely undeniably circumvent those preferences and those rights that those individuals deserve and have earned. This mayor's office talks a lot about equity and what's fair and what's equitable. Let me remind you, the 12 lateral transfers already, those individuals already have good civil service firefighting jobs. They already have a pension, they already have benefits and healthcare for themselves and their families. And this city wants to take them in here and take the opportunity of 12 residents and give them to them. What is equitable, equitable about that? What is fair about that? I don't see it. And the city's inability to hire in a timely manner should not result in any negative consequences for these candidates who paid good money, took time out of their life to study and prepare and take this test. And it is an inability, inability to hire in a timely manner. For the last two years, this union has urged this administration, you need to start hiring for the Assembly Square Station. And we're met with the same answer every time. It's too early, it's too soon, it's too far out, we're not ready yet. But now I'm standing here because now they're trying to tell you there's not enough time to hire. Last year, the city of Quincy hired 16 candidates in six months. The city of Malden just hired six candidates in three months. And in 2008, I was hired with a group of 12 in eight months. Last year, councilors, allies on the council, went to the city and brought on the Quincy example, and the answer was Quincy runs their own academy, it's different there. It's not different there. I'm not standing here talking about academies, I'm talking about hiring. The city drives the hiring process, the hiring process in this city is broken, it needs to be fixed, it needs to be fixed now. And once again, Local 76 is demanding that this city calls for the certification list and hires the right way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jefferson. I'd like to sponsor Stephen Fleyth, Somerville resident. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Stephen Fleyth, I'm a Somerville resident, I'm also on the civil service eligibility list as a firefighter. I had the honor of being a case manager and responding to fires during the pandemic. And at that time, I just learned how hard firefighters work. And then I saw a gap between the young people in our city and the opportunity to be a firefighter. So kids don't like you just talk about things, they want experience, and I thought, I need to, I need to go through this in order to be taken seriously. I signed up for the test, it costs money, it's a very narrow window, it's about two weeks to sign up for the test. It is offered in Spanish, but we know that to really do a test, you need support. I did that. The physical exam is one of the hardest things I've ever done. I ran a 50-mile race, that was harder, and is only to, to give you a sense of what it is to be a firefighter, and it's not even close. We dragged an empty hose and people were out of breath, imagine standing there in 60 pounds of gear, whatever you have, it's impossible. I care about my community. And I think if, if, I've been on this list for two years, and if I go to a group of young people who are out of work, I think 5%, 10% of high school graduates in Somerville have no plans, but they're dedicated, they're, they're smart, they're wise, they're hard working, great group to be a fighter fighter, increased diversity, increased people who have lived in this community for generations and want to be a fighter fighter. If I go to them now and say, you do all this work and it doesn't happen, I'm not being honest. Let your yes be a yes, your no be a no. I committed to this process, and I'm at the end of the process, it's saying, no, we've changed the rules. We need to be consistent. And so I just, Mr. President, thank you for the time, and I just, again, support this crew. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fleyth. Kristin, Counselor Strezzo has asked to sponsor someone as well.
Thank you, I would like to sponsor Matt Sullivan, please.
Welcome.
Matt Sullivan, been a Somerville firefighter for about two and a half years. I've also been union steward at Edgeon 7 on Highland Ave, and a member of our Local 76 Executive Board for a year and some change now. And I'd just like to thank Counsel Strezzo for sponsoring me tonight to speak. One thing super quick before I lose track, the city thinks it's gonna take a while to make these hires naturally through the civil service process. I think you're kind of underestimating how difficult it might be for these lateral transfers to take effect as well, psych, background, all those other issues. So if you think it's gonna be quick, easy and efficient and a Band-Aid, I think you're all wrong, sorely mistaken. So anyways, I'm gonna try to shed some light on what I think you're missing out on as opposed to what you're getting. So I did not grow up in Somerville, I was raised in Wakefield, but I've been attached to the city and to this department and to all the guys behind me for quite some time. My father, Paul Sullivan, served as a firefighter in the city for about 27 years. And what you're missing out on is pride. What you're gonna be getting are 12 opportunists looking for a pay raise, okay? What you're missing out on are guys like my father, guys like me, and another candidate who I'll get to in a moment. I wanted to do this job because I saw the pride that my father took in it. Growing up around him, growing up around all these guys, his brothers and sisters on the department, I saw the pride that he took in doing it. So much pride that when he was laying on his deathbed at the age of 48, right before he lost his life to occupational cancer because of hazards that we encounter as Somerville firefighters, he was still beaming with it, still beaming with pride. And I said, wow, I can't imagine doing anything else. I can't imagine another calling, vocation, career more fulfilling than this guy who's sitting here and is still beaming with pride and with no regrets. And all those candidates on that list have pride. If these other 12 wanted to be Somerville firefighters, they would be already, but they're elsewhere. They didn't prioritize us. We don't want to be anybody's second choice, okay? We want Somerville firefighters. Selfishly, I'm also up here to, well, I was gonna advocate for him, but my brother, Michael Sullivan, he's on the list as a candidate, since he was in diapers, he's wanted to do it. And if I, if the roles were reversed and I was still trying to get on, he'd be up here doing the same thing for me because he has pride, and that's the main attribute you should be looking for when you're hiring Somerville firefighters, not taking 12 guys from Eastover Shoe. My brother couldn't be here tonight because he's at home with a newborn who he committed to raising in this city for the sole purpose of maintaining the residency requirement necessary to become a Somerville firefighter. Same boat as me, grew up in Wakefield, paying $3,000 a month almost to live here with his girlfriend and his newborn. He's oozing pride. All the other candidates on that list are oozing pride, and you guys are losing pride by doing this. It's just, it's a disgrace, to be perfectly honest with you. Because I think all these guys behind me can agree, but I still wake up every day and I have to pinch myself because the first thing that crosses my mind is, oh my God, I'm a Somerville firefighter, okay? And this was the only thing I wanted to do. You have dozens of candidates on that list, my brother included, and, you know, I know it's selfish to just advocate for him because there are so many other guys deserving of the opportunity, like the gentleman who just spoke as well. But he's the perfect representation of what you're missing out on. So I suppose I'll leave you with this. I know, for me anyway, I take pride in this, I do it because I take pride in this, and it's a direct reflection of the job that I do and the care that I provide. If you never hire these guys, you're gonna be missing out on it. So, I don't know about all of you, but if my house is on fire, or if I'm roughed up in a car accident, or I have a loved one suffering a medical event, and I'm calling the Somerville Fire Department, I want it to be Somerville firefighters showing up who have the utmost pride in what they do. I don't want guys showing up who are in it for the money. I don't know about anybody else here. We want guys who refuse to ride on any truck that says anything other than Somerville on the side of it, guys who refuse to wear a bunker coat that has anything other than the big old SFD on the back of it, and that's what you just screwed up. That's what we're missing out on now. So I urge you all to do whatever you possibly can because it's an absolute disgrace.
Thank you, Counsel Klingon.
Mr. President, if you'll indulge me, I would like to sponsor someone else. I know I'm being a little greedy here, I know that we have a presentation from Council McGlaughlin up ahead, but I'd be remiss if I didn't bring up the number one person on this list in waiting, a person who has fought to be on this list tooth and nail with numerous fights against this administration through the, through the civil service process, and that is Mr. Henry Lima, Somerville resident. I'd like to have him come up and just say a few words. This is somebody who's already shown his desire and his heart to be a Somerville firefighter. So I'd like to hear if everyone, including the mayor, hopefully is listening, to hear from Mr. Lima. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lima, welcome.
I'd like to thank the city council, Counsel Scott, McGlaughlin, Klingon, Mbah, who've brought my case to attention for a number of years now. I took the exam in 2014, I'm sorry.
Oh, please introduce yourself for our record.
I'm sorry, my name is Henry Lima, and I'm, I'm number one, the number one candidate on the current list. I took the exam in 2014, went through the hiring process in 2015, and was bypassed to, due to a corrupt hiring process. I fought it in civil service, I fought it in MCAD, and I fought it in Superior Court, and was victorious in all three courts. I went through a hiring process again, and once again, I ended up going through a corrupt hiring process. People keep asking me why I keep going. There are three reasons. A, I love this city, I grew up here, I went to school here, I volunteered here, blood, sweat and tears here. Another reason is because of these guys. A lot of these guys I went to school with, a lot of them I didn't, I met them along the way. They'd come up to me at a restaurant or on the street, hey, are you Henry Lima? I just want to shake your hand, keep going, you deserve it, keep going. Keep going. It's a great job. And the third reason is, to reiterate what Mike Jefferson said, I constantly think about the amount of candidates, 18, 19, 20-year-olds, whose dreams are dashed because of every single hiring process that the Somerville, the city gives, it's somehow corrupted, or it's, or the rules are manipulated, or they're trying to work outside the lines. Every single time. How many, how many candidates throughout the years have lost out on this job and gave up because they thought they were never going to get it? It breaks my heart. It really does. And now I'm hearing they're going outside to get guys from other cities. Just in October, just as far back as October 10, 2023, the city filed an affidavit with civil service to have one of my rights removed from my civil service decision because they were afraid that if I'm bypassed and they'd have to answer for it right away, they, it would hold up the hiring process. They've known, they knew when this, when they got approved of this firehouse, when it was going to be built, when they signed the lease for the property, when the ground was broken, and during my hiring process, during my civil service case. Why is it taken, why now? Why now do they want to go outside the city? Why don't they want to hire Somerville guys, Somerville women? Like, it just doesn't make any sense. It's wrong. It shouldn't happen. Anybody who paid their hard-earned money, anybody who represented this country, anybody who's a resident of this city should have a right to a fair hiring process in this city. I am completely against these laterals. I stand with the union. I stand with city council. This shouldn't happen. Thank you.
All right, Councilor McLaughlin.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. I took the unusual step of nerding out and creating a PowerPoint presentation to explain this. Because I'm in a weird situation, as someone who's served on this council for 10 years, I've seen the historic problems with hiring, particularly within the fire department. And I know there's people around this horseshoe, people in the public who probably are, and even people, I've had people who are intimately involved in the hiring process asking me, what's the big deal? Like, why are you making such a big deal about this? And I want to give a, just timeline of everything that's happened as long as I've been on this council in terms of people being discriminated against or passed over, bypassed for firefighter hires, and then just give a point, counterpoint to the memo that we received explaining all this. I'll try to be brief, but I needed this to keep my thoughts collected. So March 13, 2008, City of Somerville approved the use of a reserve firefighter and police list. This means that the city can select candidates from civil service lists and hold their appointment indefinitely, bypassing future lists. I'm bringing up the reserve list because it's mentioned as a reason that we have to do this because the city council got rid of this. We are now compelled to hire outside of the city, and I'll get to that in a moment. But in my time here, I think I've, I've talked to Mike Jefferson about it, I, we're on like four or five lists that have never gotten consideration for people. If you took those exams, you were never even looked at once to get hired in the city. So that was 2008, 2014, we hire, put 12 names on the reserve list. 2015, when I'm here, we appoint 10 certified candidates from the firefighter exam list. Three days later, the director of HR expands the firefighter list to 25. Now, most cities don't use reserve lists at all. A few small cities do around us, and you can look it up and see that most cities would never go past three or five people on the list. The idea is to hold a position so that they can go to the academy when the position opens up and streamline things, make them go faster. So something happened within this three-day time period that the director of HR decided that we need 25 people now. The next year, a year later, and I'll note too that July is usually when we're on recess, so people kind of don't pay attention to what's going on. I don't think that's a coincidence. March 24, a year later, the mayor's office submits these 25 names to the list. Next slide, please. So July 14, once again, July, the list is expanded to 39 after it's revealed that a veteran was intentionally bypassed. I was a part of this process. And here's a quote from Lima versus Sullivan. This is Henry here, his lawsuit against the city, pointed out that after being told, the city said that the civil service basically told them that because they intended, they expanded the list without consultation, they're in violation of the two N plus one, which basically means you got to interview double the amount of people that you think you need to hire, and that's for transparency and to give people an opportunity. The head of HR was, and this is a quote from the civil service judge, the head of HR was involved in the decision-making process to appoint 15 and then requested another certification list, the certification, and then basically adds that the fire chief was not even aware of this when it happened. So this is all public record testimony on the record, information that directly led to Henry getting discriminated against, not only the other veteran that we fortunately were able to get on. So they expanded this list because they knew this veteran was going to get his day in court and basically opened it up for him. And the reason for this, I don't even want to go into the details, people are aware of what happened there, but this civil service commission found that our HR director was in violation of the law, and that's just a proven fact in court. So August 16, the first person on the current firefighter list appeals his decision, that's Henry. That's, so he's on the list right now as number one. We're talking seven, eight years waiting to become a firefighter. The reserve fire list and actions of the HR director are cited as a reason that he was discriminated against and why he should be put at the top of the list. He had to appeal numerous times just to get an opportunity again to be a firefighter. And then this is him again, he wins his appeal a year later. So August 2017, the last person on the reserve list is approved. So even though, and the police voluntarily refrained from using, oh, this is, sorry. This is the last person on the police reserve list who is approved, and the police, through our advocacy, decided not to use the reserve list anymore. So they did this on their own, they found another way to hire people. We've appointed people throughout the years without using this, and I'll just add to, well, I'll leave that alone. But 2018, the council approves a resolution that the administration refrains from appointing any further candidates for the position of reserve firefighter and seek to discontinue it. Then-councilor-president Kattiana Ballantyne, who's the mayor, she sponsored this resolution. Now, for people who don't sit around this horseshoe, when you sponsor a resolution, you'll see a bunch of us make this hand signal, like, oh, we want to sign on to this. And usually, occasionally, you have someone who, like, the whole council supports this resolution, and maybe someone just stayed quiet because they just didn't want to disagree with people. In this case, I went back and watched the video from 2022 where the mayor publicly says, I would like to sign on to this resolution. So she signed on to revoking the firefighter list at that time. 2020 now, the last firefighter list is approved, four years after they were first appointed. So if you took an exam within those four years, you never got a phone call, you never got an interview, you never got an opportunity to apply for this job. And it's, I should note too that even though several of us really disagreed with this policy, we knew that the firefighters on this list were not the people to blame. They were just beneficiaries of this system, and we allowed them to get all 36 firefighters off this list, and I think we even added some after that. So the city council went to great lengths to not hurt people and get in the way of their dreams, even though we felt that this was an unfair practice. So now we finally get to 20, August 25, 2020, the former mayor submits a memo updating the council on a new fire station in Assembly Square. So we're considering hiring 12 firefighters specifically for the fire station in Assembly. We've known about this since August 2020. In February 2021, Councilor Scott submits an order to revoke the firefighter list, so once again, we're stating our preference to not use this list. It was also supported by then-councilor Ballantyne. A year later, Councilor Davis resubmits the same order to eliminate the reserve lists, and a few months later, we finally get, we finally remove the reserve list. And what's interesting about this is we need to tell the state that we're doing this. So this got sent up to the state. So the way it works, we submit this ordinance or this change, and it goes to the mayor's desk for approval. And it got to the State House, so it had to have some form of approval, find out that the mayor actually did not sign the document, but because of our charter, if you don't sign a document within 10 days, it's automatically approved. So she has to know this and knows that this went up to the State House and chose not to say anything about it to us. And basically, I don't want to guess why, but if, if another mayor, or if somebody was really passionately in support of the reserve firefighter list, thought that it was a key, important aspect to hiring firefighters, what they should do is veto it, send it back to the city council, show up and explain why this is important and why the sins of the past will not be repeated. She just didn't sign it, and it went to the State House. So I don't think not signing the document absolves you of any responsibility. November 2022, the city council requests information on the staffing of the fire station. So this is two years now, we're asking questions, what's going on with this hiring process. Last year, February 2023, the city council requests information about the hiring process. I submitted this because residents reached out to me and said, I hear they're doing lateral hires. And I said, I'd like some information about this, went down to committee, and I asked them, quote, please don't go down this path. I had to go back and watch all these videos just to remember this because it's so complicated. Next slide, please. So March 28, 2023, confirmation of appointments meeting. The administration announces that the fire station that was scheduled to open in January '24 was pushed back to August 2024, and it's now pushed back to February 2025. So it's already been pushed back twice. And when we brought this up and we brought up the potential lateral hires, legislative liaison Hannah Correa says that this change, the delay in the opening, is a substantial shift in the timeline, which means we have the opportunity to reevaluate how we plan to proceed. We do not have, we do now have the time to do two lists between then and now, and the second list came out just a couple of weeks ago. We're going to be exploring all options available to us, which includes potential language lists and gender lists. So there are civil service lists that prioritize women and people who speak other languages, and that is a correct way to go through the civil service without bypassing people and prioritizing the diversity that we're looking for. We have not made any decisions, we have not made any commitments to use in transfers. Our timeline has changed, which has changed the conversation. This is a year ago. So between a year and now, that, what happened? We have to talk about that. Councilors Kling, Wilson, Panetta, Newfeld, a majority of the committee speak against the lateral hires. May 2023, the city notifies police officers requesting lateral transfers, that they will not allow lateral transfers outside of the police department due to the impact of these transfers would have on the department. So I point this out because what do we think every other city in Massachusetts is going to do when their firefighters and police choose to leave and go to the city of Somerville? Their mayor, just like our mayor, can say, no, we're not doing that, and we're not going to let you go. We had many people wanting to leave, and we told them, no, I'll leave it at that, but I think we should expect the same from other cities. June 2023, they've asked for a bond to fit out the assembly, so this is getting real now. February 2024, we signed a 30-year lease for the assembly fire station. So we're getting very close to having a fire station in Assembly. And that brings us to the present day, so that's just so people understand the history of what's going on here. The city sent out a memo that I would just like to break apart, the arguments here. One of the points they made was that the upcoming fire station was created, the need for high volume of new firefighters at once, which is greater than the typical hiring process. This process has been pushed back twice already, and in my experience, no construction ever gets completed on time. I would not be surprised if it got extended even further. And even if it is ready by February 2025, the city knew since October 2021 that we would need staffing here. And in my opinion, and in the opinion of the president of the union, if there is any kind of gap, which will hopefully be short, overtime can handle that. So we don't need to go and aggressively pursue new hires in the anticipation of this fire station because we have people who can do that job now until we have the firefighters that we want in this community. So another point they made is a reserve list would be a viable tool to prepare. So this is the reserve list again, basically blaming us for removing one more tool in their tool belt to get around the civil service exam. We did this again because the reserve list was abused. That's not an opinion, it's a fact that was proven in court. The city is blaming the city council for not allowing them to have one more tool to do what we asked them not to do repeatedly. City council gave the city six years to prepare for this. We gave them six years to get rid of the reserve list before we hurt a single person. We didn't hurt anybody, and we gave them so much time that, to think that we're still here talking about this is insane to me. The council president, the mayor, and then-council president and the mayor signed on to rescind this reserve list and tacitly approved rescinding the list as mayor. So this is one that, this was the last point they made, and I think that's important to note, that of all the points they made, diversity is the last thing they mentioned. Utilizing lateral hiring, we can tailor our recruitment efforts to target specific populations that will benefit our residents, such as women, those who speak multiple languages, and people of color. So I think it's important to have diverse police and fire. Any diversity hires we make, or any hires period outside of the city, will be a lateral hire. That's what it is. You are hiring laterally, you're moving from one place to the other. We will be taking the diversity from other cities and claiming that as progress. No other city that I know of is any more successful than us in increasing diversity. So we're going to be going to the same pool as everybody else, so we're going to be dealing with the phases we see here, the phases in every fire department, they're basically all the same. So we're going to be going to the same pool when we did have an opportunity to focus on diversity using civil service lists that a year ago, the city said they would consider and apparently did not do. And we're also poaching people who already have jobs. The system has worked for them, and we need to give new Somerville people an opportunity. We just had a ceremony here. The people that we hire outside of the city had that ceremony, they got a photo with their families, they got to have a job with dignity and respect, and if we don't move forward with their appointments here, they will still have those jobs and they will still be able to provide for those families. The people here are going to be left waiting another year, and another year, and another year to take an exam and pray that they get to work in the city. So this was not on the memo, but this was said to me by a staff person, which I just couldn't believe, that, you know, there are Somerville people in other cities that we might be able to hire, and we can screen them, we can find these perfect Somerville candidates using the lateral hires. Every other city has residential preference. Every other city is prioritizing their residents for hires. So this idea that instead of using the list of people who are proven to live in the city of Somerville, that we're going to find better Somerville people, I just don't believe. And the people on the current list, they have paid to take this exam, they've gone through physicals, they have taken this exam multiple times. Some people who have on the fire department, how many people here have taken the firefighter's exam more than once? And that's hundreds of dollars, that's a Saturday or a Sunday every year, taking time, studying, preparing for this. So there's also, they say that there's a backlog for both the police and fire department, which could potentially delay any further starts. I called Eric Littman, the director of the Massachusetts Firefighter Academy, who told me that nine to 12 months is certainly not the case. The city says it'll take nine to 12 months with every step along the way, unless it is held up on the city's side. Comfortable stating that once we receive the names, it would take eight to 12 weeks to get new hires in the city, maximum 20 weeks to get them hired and trained. We have 40 weeks. So what's going on here? What is the dark conspiracy that I'm alluding to? Like, who is the man in the shadows making these decisions? What is going on here? What do we do when we look through the looking glass and find out what's behind this fiendish Hiring off the civil service list is hard. That's what this really comes down to. That's the only excuse that I actually believe, that it is difficult to talk to so many people and go through this process and hire them. Every other reason given, I think, is a smokescreen to get past this, which is it is difficult to hire people off the civil service list. And this is also from their memo. I won't read it all, but it basically says, we have to interview two plus one people. It's going to take about 40 hours of working weeks in order to do all of this. It's very challenging to schedule and can be a source of further delay. The civil service process is intentionally difficult to ensure fairness. It's made difficult. You have to interview this many people. You have to interview this many people so that nobody gets bypassed and that everyone gets their day to come before us and interview for this job. So how many people are we going to interview if we do lateral hires? Are we going to do 12 interviews and go happy with them? Or are we going to do 20, 30 people, as we should, when we do it through the regular civil service? The city has been aware of the need for more firefighters for years, and we still have 43 weeks estimated time, assuming that this fire station even gets built in a timely manner. So I'm going to end there, but just final thoughts. Multiple city councils have spoken against circumventing the civil service list since at least 2018. I would go back even further to even before my time, people questioned this process. No one should expect these historic hiring issues to change if we don't take a stand and push this issue. The city is not going to change. They're not going to learn how to hire people the way every other city does in this commonwealth if we just continue to accept this from happening. And in my opinion, and the opinion of several people who can hire a lawyer, any deviation from using the firefighter civil service list will likely lead to expensive and time-consuming lawsuits that will make lateral hires for the sake of efficiency a move point. If anyone here is taking the exam and you're on the list, I would talk to a lawyer. And if you are a veteran, there are services that will provide you free lawyer services to prepare for this. And at the very least, you can make the city be transparent with their hiring process and delay this and remove the intention, which is to basically fast-track this. If it's not done fast, it doesn't seem worth it to the city. In my opinion, going through the civil service list will be the faster option. And you can ask Henry Lima, who is waiting seven years to become a firefighter, whether this is a fast process to go through the civil service and get sued. So I expect a lot of lawsuits to come out of this if the city doesn't do what I believe is right. And I would encourage all of you to advocate for your rights. I'll just end that, you know, around this council, we've talked, this is why I'm going on and on about this. We have a lot of sayings around this council. One of them, we often say is like, this isn't my hill to die on. It's usually to say, yeah, I don't like this, but okay, I accept it. I don't accept it and this is my hill to die on and I'm not going to, in whatever capacity I can in my limited capacity, I'm not going to allow this to move forward. And I would encourage other people. And I'm going to quit while I'm ahead. Thank you.
Of Counselor Kling and then Counselor Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, thank you to the good counselor for putting that enormous amount of work and just, you know, going through those videos and just taking us down memory lane, really bringing up all those feelings of anger that many, when you talk about the hill to die on through you, Mr. President, that hill, as some may know, that that is actually the hill that many of us were looking up at, that forced us into office because of the corruption that we had watched with that list many times and just the corruption in general that, you know, we felt was happening around the city. So, and in this case, I agree with you that I don't think it's any super dark conspiracy at this point in time with this particular administration, other than this is about convenience. This is convenience for those in HR and those who do the hiring process. So these guys who are on this list, they're victim to a convenience because we knew this for years and we've talked about this. And we were actually led to believe at one point that, like it said, that lateral hires were off the table. And then for them to all of a sudden sandbag us, blindside us with this move for lateral hires is extremely infuriating. And quite frankly, I, you know, I stand with the union. I mean, I've always been against the lateral hires, but, but I just can't believe that it's come to this, especially with this particular mayor who sat on the council with us through a lot of those processes and signed off on many of the getting ready of the list and so on. So you made a lot of great points and I thank you. I just want to say that, again, this is extremely infuriating and disappointing. And, you know, if we can't hire 12 firefighters, I mean, what kind of municipality are we? I mean, at this point in the game, just, just out of convenience, I don't want to say laziness, but I want to say convenience because we've had plenty of time to do a partial hiring and that, you know, whatever, whatever, whatever called for, we knew this station was coming online and clearly in the data that Counsel McGlaughlin showed in his presentation that we were asking questions four years ago. So once again, you know, we're not in a position to vote on this, but we certainly have been forced to, and certainly in Counsel McGlaughlin's case, dig in and fight and go through the history of this, simply to show everybody who's maybe paying attention or not paying attention, that for some of us, this is extremely personal. We know many people who were affected by the past practices and will be affected by this. And, and I'd say shame on this administration for doing this, and I will not be supporting lateral hires and I will also be doing whatever I can to, to stop this maneuver. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. I appreciate Counsel McGlaughlin's visually striking presentation and probably what we can assume is the first It's Always Sunny in Philadelphia meme to be entered into the public record in this city. I want to thank Somerville Fire Local 76 for their advocacy leading up to tonight and for being here tonight. Obviously, they've lumped police and fire together here. The situation with police, very different from fire. It's just night and day in terms of the interest in those positions, you know, especially locally here. I know, it's a heavy, heavy lift to hire a full company off the list. No dispute. We're asking a lot of the administration and city staff to do that. It just seems like it's worth the effort to me to do that. You know, the timeline, as Counsel McGlaughlin mentioned, you know, currently February 2025, he also mentioned, we've seen that pushed back multiple times already and it would surprise none of us, I'm sure, if it got pushed back again. And even if we don't have that company hired when the station is ready to open, you know, as Counsel McGlaughlin mentioned, we could always staff with current firefighters, you know, with overtime, at least through the summer, it sounds like, from talking to Mike Jefferson. And, you know, worst case scenario, we could always wait to staff the station until that company is hired. It would leave us nowhere soft in the current situation. I've got concerns. I've got concerns over passing over veterans, especially the disabled veterans. Five of the top eight on this new list are disabled veterans. And I just want to make sure we've got hiring from the list figured out as a long-term strategy. So much work has gone into making a candidate pool more diverse, with more local residents, increasing the awareness in the community. We heard Stephen Fry talk about that. You know, making people aware that these are good, important jobs here in Somerville that they can go for. And then the help, figuring out how to help people with the costs and the logistics of taking these tests. I also want to point out, as Counsel McGlaughlin mentioned, these lateral transfers would have to be approved by their current employers. What does it say about a lateral hire that the current employer is willing to let them leave? You know, very recently, we, as mentioned in the presentation, we, this mayor blocked lateral hires out of Somerville to Cambridge. And then I'm just left trying to reconcile the claims that, you know, on one hand, we didn't, now we're hearing we didn't, we don't have enough time to hire from the list, but, you know, previously it was too early, you know, and then now we're hearing the reserve list makes hiring from the, from the civil service, the lack of reserve list makes it impossible to hire from the, from the list. So I just say, let's put in the hard work to do this right and figure out how to hire off the civil service list. Thanks.
Counselor Scott, then Counselor Mbah.
Thank you, Mr. President. I really appreciate the chance to talk about this, although I certainly don't relish the fact that we still need to talk about this. I want to thank my colleague from Ward 1 for this work. I also wanted to note from one of those slides that I think it was back in 2014, the city did complete a civil service hiring process for 10 people in just nine months. So we don't have to look for other communities for examples of how to function. We apparently have a history of it here. I also want to thank my colleague from Ward 4 for bringing the person who was number one on this list tonight and sponsoring them to speak. And with that in mind, I do want to speak for a moment of the sins of the past. Mr. Lima, I have had your name in my mouth since my very first committee meeting on this council as the chair of our Confirmation of Appointments and Personnel Matters Committee, and I've never met you before tonight. So it's a pleasure to meet you. The reason Mr. Lima's name has been in my mouth is because he has fought, he has gone through court at multiple levels and in every turn documented and allowed to be documented the corrupt practices of this city in their, in their hiring process. I know his story because I read it in court records. It's so bad, Mr. President, that when the city of Somerville next takes on a civil service hiring process, the Civil Service Commission has said that if we don't hire Mr. Lima for any reason, we have to save one of our vacancies. We have to save it until we have justified to the commission's satisfaction that there was some brand new reason that we couldn't hire Mr. Lima. We can't use any of the reasons that have been used in the past. They explicitly forbid it. And they are so mistrusting of our handling of hiring processes that we have to show our work. Thanks. Now, the reason that all of that is something that I know is because everybody who goes through a civil service hiring process has legal rights. Everybody who goes through this process has the right to file an appeal to the commission to be heard. It's not easy. It takes a long time. It takes hiring a lawyer, it takes a lot of money, but you can get to the truth. If we pursue any other form of hiring here, not only are all the ills that have already been discussed on the table, but we are putting what has demonstrably been proven over decades to be a corrupt hiring process, we're putting it behind the closed doors. There is no opportunity to open that up and find out what injustice may have been done. Right? So given our city's history, I'm glad that this council moved and did eliminate those reserve lists. I will point out again that a year ago, I put forward an item directing the solicitor to prepare legislation preventing the use of lateral hires. I'm not even sure we could do that. Not even sure we could bind the executive in that way, but it didn't happen in that full year. Solicitor's office did not. So, so here we are now, and as, as has been said, this is not something that we can directly act upon at this moment to prevent. And so it leaves us with a question of what we will do to express our displeasure, what we will do to ensure that this course of action is abandoned by this administration and that the right thing is done. Our authority is limited, but here we are approaching budget season once again. And I, for one, am going to be very pointed in my cuts if this administration cannot see to doing the right thing in the civil service process. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Mbah, then Counselor Davis, and then our intergovernmental affairs liaison would like to speak.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Mike Jefferson, who spoke from Locust 76, Stephen Fry, Matt Sullivan, and Andrew Lee. And I just want to make it clear that I stand with you and I will not be supporting something like this. It doesn't make any sense, you know, so it's, I mean, your story is, it's a no-brainer. Like one of my colleagues mentioned, we should not be talking about this, but here we are, it's before us, we have to deliberate on it. I made some notes. I will probably preface some of the things that the good counselor from Ward 1 mentioned, which clearly states that back in April of 2022, when I wasn't on the city council, you know, you guys took a decisive action to end the use of the reserve list as a method of filling vacancies. The city council members were quite clear that the goal was to move Somerville away from the old system of legacy hiring and begin reaching out to find candidates of diverse backgrounds to take part in the hiring process. At the time, two years ago, the discussion about the need for 12 new firefighters for Assembly Square was already underway. With a clear policy direction from the city council, the city department should have taken the various steps needed to move these positions through the cumbersome civil service. For whatever reasons, however, they did not happen. Now, two years later, we have been told that there is an emergency that can only be fixed by using this old tool of lateral transfers. Meanwhile, during the same two years, at both local and state level, a variety of alternative reforms of civil service and hiring practices have been on the agendas with no real progress achieved. Here in the city, we have had months and months of abstract discussion on diversity and equity issues, but we know practical reforms yet underway. So I'm afraid that this situation of static non-decision will simply continue as long as we are willing to use temporary fixes like the lateral hiring mechanism. I'm really sorry to burden our hardworking officers and administrators who may have had to continue working with reduced staff resources. But however, I think that in the interest of real reform, it is necessary to close off to the city another temporary solution that simply perpetuates the old ways of doing business. So I will not be supporting this lateral hire, just to reiterate what I said in the beginning.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief. I agree with, thank you to Counselor McGlaughlin for, for putting this work together. Counselor Mbah touched on a number of the points I was going to make, so I won't make those, I won't repeat them, just say I agree. I was the chair of Legislative Matters, well, I am still, and I spent hours working along with others on the committee on getting rid of these reserve lists. We spent hours in committee talking about the scenarios and other ways that we could address these hiring needs that we foresaw at the time. There were lots of different approaches, lots of different ways that could have been taken. And so I also was, again, imagine my surprise, as somebody said when we got this memo a few weeks back. I thought in 2022, when we realized that we could, that our revocation of the reserve list could go to the state without the mayor's signature, that we had seen an end to the funny business and that we'd accomplished something. And yet here we are again, so we will try and find another way to end the funny business if we at all can.
We have Kimberly Hutter's here from the mayor's office, please.
Thank you, council president, and through you to the members and for the audience members. My name is Kimberly. I'm a legislative liaison in the mayor's office. And I wanted to acknowledge all of the things that have been shared today. Thank you to the council members and to the sponsored speakers. City staff are prepared to talk on this. However, they are not here tonight and they will be present at a later date at the selection of this body, either at the full council or a capum of the whole. So those questions, your questions can be answered at that time. Thank you.
Thank you. And yes, you know, for members of the public watching this, the administration advised me last week that staff would be unavailable tonight. So this discussion is the council talking and we're going to be having, you know, back and forth to the extent we need to with the administration at an upcoming meeting. Counselor Burnley.
Thank you through the chair. I'm going to be a little repetitive because when firefighters come before the council, I like to say the same thing over and over and over again, which is just how much I appreciate the work that firefighters do. Most people in this, on the dais, everyone on the dais knows I was not born in Somerville. I did not grow up in Somerville. I grew up in Southern California, in San Diego. And the first time I ever put a mask over my face wasn't because of COVID, it was because of massive wildfires that made rain from the sky and made it impossible for me to breathe when I was leaving my elementary school. I know what it's like to have to leave your home because of fires approaching. I know the fear that residents have to go through in that experience, and because of that, I've never wanted to be a firefighter. I don't, I wouldn't put myself generally in the shoes of the people who are here today. It's not my dream, and it's not something that I would make myself go through. But because I know that about myself, and I know the dangers that are entailed in this work, I am extremely grateful for the work that goes into it and for the cost of it on individuals and families. I spent time in Counselor Davis's Legislative Matters meeting in those discussions, working on a way to get rid of this reserve list, and it was one of the probably longer conversations we had in that committee. But I was really excited to have those discussions because it felt like the council was making good on a conversation that it had been having for years to get rid of a relic of an old corrupt system, and we did so. And although I am grateful that the administration is not trying to somehow resurrect that old system, replacing it with the lateral hires is not acceptable. For me, even as someone who does not, did not grow up in this community, I love Somerville. I love the people of Somerville. I love the people who invest their time and energy and their safety to make this a better place. And the lateral hires to me, to kind of paraphrase a bit, it's like, let's make Somerville Medford again. It's like, let's take all the things that make this place such a wonderful community, and let's look for across the state or the region, and let's just pull in whoever is willing to come do the work here. Quite frankly, we do that enough in this city with so many other departments and so many other tasks that we need to get done locally. I'm not looking forward to the administration trying to pull that with fire, and, you know, I will say, as a member of capum, Personnel Matters, if the administration moves forward with this, it still would have to go before the council. These people would be put in a horrible position to have to come before a committee that has spent so long trying to support and bring forward new applicants, diverse applicants, young applicants for this department from Somerville. And as a member of that committee, I will not support a single lateral hire, and I will vote no on every single one. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll be very brief. You know where I stand. I cherish you in our community and your devotion to us. You know, I see you often, working hard and coming to Somerville, I'm sorry, Assembly and back and all over the city. We're with you, and let's figure this out together. Thank you.
I just want to first thank Counselor McLaughlin for the presentation, for providing the background. That was really helpful. I want to thank everyone here. Thank you for all your hard work, for your dedication to our community, and yeah, I think this is unacceptable, and I will not be supporting this. Yeah. Thank you.
So my message to the administration is simple. It is not too late to reconsider this decision. I want to thank Counselor McLaughlin. I thought that that was an extraordinary presentation. I think this is an extraordinary situation. I want to thank everyone who's here from the Fire Department tonight and everyone who's out working and all of my colleagues. I think if anyone, you know, in the administration is under the impression that lateral hiring is going to save the city time and effort and costs, it seems extremely clear to me from what was said tonight that that is wrong. So, you know, again, I want to say it's not too late to reconsider this decision, and I urge the administration to do that and save all of us a mess. So we're going to, Counselor Punita Nufeld is virtual, and she has her hand raised. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I know everyone spoke. I'll be brief as well, and I'm sorry, I can't be there in person. No one in the room wants what I have right now, trust me, but I wanted to similarly express my support for the firefighters that are in the room and for what they do for the city, and express my dismay at this decision of the mayor to do lateral hiring, utilize that tool instead of, instead of the tools that we have at our disposal. I am struck by the timeline that Counselor McLaughlin set out. Thank you for doing all that extra research for us, Counselor. You know, I apologize if this comes across as sarky. Perhaps it's my sickness, but, you know, in every major decision in the city that's made, there's extensive community input processes, there's extensive, often reviews and studies that are being done, and in this particular decision that affects so many lives of our Somerville residents, affects so many families of people that live here in our communities, it's just, you know, it sort of came to us so last minute as a council to discuss. Obviously, it's not a decision we can make, it's a decision of the mayor, but I'm really kind of struck by how quickly it was made with no input by the council, other than the conversation we're having tonight. Like you, Mr. President, I hope the mayor is listening and goes back to the drawing board with this decision and comes back to us, having heard the comments, but I am just really taken aback by how this decision was made in particular and how other decisions that we ask from the council, from our community members to be making, to be taken and made swiftly, are often kind of put on the table for longer, longer discussions and studies. So like you, I'm, and the full, it sounds like the full council dismayed at the memo that came out before us, and appreciate everyone speaking tonight, and in particular, Counselor McLaughlin, for your presentation as well.
So we're going to lay this, we're going to place this item on file. There is, the memo is still before the council, and we're going to have staff here to talk about that at a future meeting if we wish, you know, we'll figure that offline. Counselor Strezko.
Thank you. I was asking what the next agenda item is.
Thank you all for being here. Appreciate it. All right, colleagues, we're going to get back to it. The chair has determined that a quorum is present.
Yeah, all right. The next item is item 4.1, an order by Counselor Strezko, that the Committee on Equity, Gender, Seniors, Families, and Vulnerable Populations conduct a committee of the whole public hearing to hear how the increases in water and sewer rates are affecting Somerville residents, and be it further ordered that all relevant city departments be in attendance.
All right, Counselor Strezko, we'll just wait a minute. We could just have quiet in the chamber, please. Counselor Strezko, floor is yours.
Colleagues, I think it's time for another public hearing. So I, if you read the order, calling for a public hearing in the Equity Committee, I'm thinking Wednesday, May 15th, 6:30, in person and hybrid. I am sure you've all been hearing about the water bills and the influx of anxiety that everyone's going through with this, and I think that what's important is we have residents have a chance to speak on their experiences, and I think our constituents deserve to know that their city is listening to them in this capacity. And you know where I've stood on this for years. Displacement comes in forms not just from a lack of affordable housing stock. Lower-income residents will feel the pain of the influx of water bills and sewage bills, and I've been hearing this a lot, and I'm sure you have as well, and as of last month, we know that 85% of the water meter readers are, the process has been complete, but we're still not there. And while there are some bill payer assistant programs to address water and sewer bills through the state, it is a high threshold to qualify, and it covers the water portion of the bill, but it doesn't cover the sewer portion. And in Somerville, less than 100 households are helped by the state's water bill assistance program, less than 100 residents. We have over 16,000 water bill accounts here. If you remember last month in the Housing and Community Development Committee report, I mentioned that around 900 residents are no longer receiving the ARPA-funded Low-Income Water Bill Assistance Program to help them with their water and sewer bills, and that's of April 1st. It expired. Those 900 residents are without a plan. At the same time, an influx of retrograded bills were mailed out. I've heard from residents expressing this fear, worry about how they're going to pay the water actual estimated bill, the one, years ago, they thought that the estimated bill was close enough to the actual rate. Some of the bills, I'm sure you've heard, that I've heard is at $40,000, $12,000, $5,000 after the meters were changed. We have some residents in affordable housing units whose lease requires that they pay their own water bills, and that's about 425 residents in Somerville. I've heard from one resident who's on Section 8, who has one of those units. She's distraught at her bill that it is close to $1,500. She's not sure how she's going to pay it, and she knows that it accrues interest fast. Mass General Law instills that if the water bills are not paid in well-fell swoop, we charge 14% interest rate. She says she doesn't understand how she has to pay a bill that she thought she paid years ago, and she mentioned that she's even signed her lease annually every time, over and over again, and now this water bill's due, and she's not sure what to do. Not only that, I've heard from owner-occupied landlords that proudly state that they keep their rents lower in consideration of their tenants, and now they worry that they're going to have to make the difficult decision to pass the extra amount due from their water and sewer bills onto their tenants. My hope is that we apply what we hear in this Equity Committee public hearing and act nimbly, that the administration gets the message loud and clear that we need to be acting faster, and we can't just sit here and twiddle our thumbs and wait and do as much as we can to help these influx of bills. Years ago, I stated I would not support any kind of increases without a parallel plan that addressed some of the, some of the increases that are, and help residents, unless the city presented a plan to help residents pay for their water and sewer bills. Now, I heard that the city, and I'm sure some of you met with them, the city has recently hired consultants that are exploring a ratepayer assistant program, and when I spoke to the consultants, they have not yet disclosed an endpoint of when they plan to release their findings of their anticipated report. It could be six months, it could be a year, and from there, the city, we still have to decide if we digest the report, and if we choose to implement the report, if we allocate funds, and how much, and when, and how we do it. So I urge this to be taken seriously as a crisis, because by the time that we do make a decision, we will absolutely be losing some residents. It will be too late. So some of the things that, I know that we're coming up on a vote on a monthly billing cycle instead of a three-times-a-year billing cycle, that'll help, but based on what I've heard from constituents, because I've been doing a lot of talking this, these past couple weeks, here are some steps we can take. We can aggressively expand communication efforts and dispel confusion and the despair in our billing cycles. Consider options of municipal ratepayer assistant programs that helps residents making up to $100,000 a year. Get the constituent water use monitoring system up and running. It's not yet, because I've heard that from residents who want to make sure they're conserving their water bills or their water usage, but really have no gauge yet. And Counselor Kling, your idea of YouTube videos, that was awesome. That could be a clear, simple decision that the city could make and implement within, I don't know, two weeks. We need more transparency. These solutions will help if we're decisive and we devote the time and energy to do so as swiftly as possible. As I've said before, cost of living expenses like bill increases and inflation are the kind of phenomena that cause displacement, housing insecurity, poverty, and homelessness. And now, as a community, we're staring it down. If we truly value our rich and diverse Somerville community, we have to act swiftly, and I'm looking forward to the discussion in the committee in the next month. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kling.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. I want to thank the good counsel at large for bringing forward a public hearing. I think it's, I think it's a great idea, simply because I'm extremely frustrated with the number of emails I'm getting around the high water bills, and, you know, what I want to say about the city in general, you know, there's a lot that's happened in the past two years regarding water bills. There's been a few missteps, certainly been a few missteps around getting, educating the public about what was happening, but, you know, a lot of this stuff can really get off the rails, too, in terms of, you know, some people, there was that first, when they switched over the actual systems, there were these glitches, like that ended up being worked out, and then there was when they switched over to the water meter and the big sort of gap of what the estimated cost used to be and what the meter actually said. They get this big, you know, this bulk, you know, water bill of making up for what they hadn't been charged for all of a sudden at once. So I say these things because, and that's, there's been numerous other things, and, but what it all speaks to is now there's a zero lack of trust in the city and in the entire water department and the systems that we're using. So if, in fact, that this is just sort of a natural, like an increase that has been, you know, that we've made, and as well as the new meters capturing actual water, you know, that doesn't speak to the one-offs of, you know, a couple thousand dollars here. And people want to know, they want to know how to read the bill, and they want to know that they're, they're being charged properly. And so, you know, I'm hoping that all this, this entire discussion around this whole mess of the water bills and, you know, the switching out of the meters and so on can be discussed in this, in this meeting, along with hearing from the public, that just numerous stories, you know, I feel helpless, I email the water department, and basically it's like, well, under a lot, like, we can't just let people not pay this much or that much. There's certain things they can do, certain percentages, but ultimately, you know, it's kind of a, almost like a he said, she said, the water was used, therefore, it has to be paid for, and I just think that in general, people are extremely confused and lost and scared and not understanding what's happening and whether or not they're being ripped off or whether or not it is an increase. So I think it's really about... So I think it's really about having those conversations with the public. And I think a public hearing is a great start. But I think, you know, there should have been public meetings regarding the water rates, the meters, all of that, in each ward, in each community during this process. But with that, we've kind of missed that boat. So I'm sure all of my colleagues have been getting emails about water bills, and it's very upsetting that I can't just, you know, wave a wand and make it go away. But I hope that we can get things figured out as a city, as a community, and get people trusting again, you know, what that bill says. And hopefully, in cases where they are being wrong, they'll be righted, and also programs such, you know, assistant programs, especially for our low-income people who have individually metered apartments, that, you know, we fight for this affordable housing, they end up in an affordable housing unit, which in turn, they have a water fee at some of these buildings. So... And we don't know what the owner is actually charging them. We don't have any control over that, but we certainly need to look into all of these things regarding the water and sewer rates and how it's impacting our community. So thank you for the public hearing and hopefully the discussion that ensues. Thank you.
Councilors Scott, McGlaughlin, and Mbah.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. I will try to be as brief as possible, because I have spoken at length on this issue, not just in this year with this wave of just absolutely brutal bills, but also in our last budget season. I am sure people will remember my blockbuster PowerPoint presentation detailing some of the management issues in our water department. We continue to have a problem here, where all of our frontline service in the water department is outsourced at great expense, beyond what we would pay to do the work ourselves. We... Now, I'm not sure if we're outsourcing the entire management of our water department. I know that my household itself had one of these shocking bills. So being the kind of person I am, going back through my records of five years of bills, documenting the actual reads, it doesn't make any damn sense to me either. When my partner calls the water department, there's no help to be had. So it is absolutely infuriating. I have had these longstanding problems with how our water system is being operated and how our water and sewer department is being operated. And I'm just livid that... Livid that we have to talk about it again and heartbroken for my constituents who are terrified. I got a call just this weekend from a senior citizen, lives just a few blocks from me, who is just terrified about what she can do about this bill. You know, she was even... You know what? I'll save the details for another time. All I can say, Ms. Maureen, is I'm sorry. I applaud my colleague-at-large for calling for this public hearing. I hope that someone from the administration will show up to listen. It is why I voted against the sewer rates last year, the water and sewer rate increases last year and the year before it. And I got to say, it doesn't look good for this year either. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilor McGlaughlin and Mbah.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll try to be brief, because I expended all my emotional energy on the last item. But I have had many emails about this. The one I'll highlight is I had a resident tell me that their water bill went from $700 to $5,000. And I'll hold off on describing blame for this, but whoever is to blame, it is not the residents of Somerville. So this is really concerning to me, that someone would get hit with such a hefty bill. I did meet recently with consultants, hired consultants from the city who are looking at a water mitigation rate for people who are low-income. And I told them how conflicted, as Councilor Scott pointed out, how conflicted I was at the last budget with the water and sewer rates, and how I did actually vote for that. But I would hope that we wouldn't raise rates until, at the very least, this new program, who knows how long that comes out, will be. I don't think I'm going to be so conflicted this year. If we don't even know how to measure water, I just don't know how I can charge people an extra rate for that.
Councilor Mbah.
Thank you, Mr. President. Also, I want to echo my sentiment by thanking the good Councilor-at-large. I've also gotten some emails, but I just want to, you know, remind everyone, you know, how back in 2021, in conjunction with the structural changes, you know, we had put into place a multi-year rate stabilization strategy. And the study of seawall and water finances foresaw that rates should go up each year by a small amount to cover cost increases and also generate some surplus funds to go into the seawall and water stabilization funds. This stabilization account would then provide funds for any future year when costs will be unusually high. Money will be taken from the accounts in order to keep the rate hikes on a stable schedule. But what now seems to be happening is that the projections of cost and revenue that were the basis of the stabilization strategy in 2021 are now coming true. The rate increases that are proposed are higher than the projected amounts, you know, that were supposed to be in. And it is unclear how the stabilization account money are being applied to keep the rates steady. So one of the questions I have is, you know, what are the factors that have changed from what the plan anticipated was in 2021? Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilor Wilson.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. Seems like we're in sort of a perfect storm here of meters that stopped transmitting. So people were paying estimated amounts for a long time, along with then increased rates that have happened to pay for the water and sewer infrastructure replacement, new infrastructure, like the Poplar Street pump station. And, yeah, the combination... This is when you need really good communication on something, and the public just clearly, it has not been communicated well. You have people who just are crying out for information on this, and it's really tough to come by, and it's really unfortunate. I would just say, if anyone out there is getting one of these large bills, these true-ups, make sure you're not paying the higher FY '24 rates for water you used in previous fiscal years when rates were lower. You should be able to go look into that, and I would urge people to go that route. Just it is a stopgap measure right here. But yes, to what we've heard from around the horseshoe tonight, this is a really, really rough situation for a lot of people in the city.
Thank you all. You know, I'll just add, as you've all said, we've discussed this quite a bit. And at those previous meetings, I believe the central issue is the water meter replacements, that has been mentioned. These are causing these large catch-up bills for some residents because they've had estimated bills. And in many ways, that's a communication failure. I think it's also worth acknowledging, it's just unfair. These are people, they got a bill in the mail, and they paid it. You know, imagine if our traffic officers were walking around giving out tickets for the wrong amount, and then five years later, we sent, said, "Oh, oh, actually, we charged you the wrong amount. Now you owe us the difference." That's what it feels like to people, and it is a communication issue. It's also just unfair. That said, our hands are quite tied by state law. I mean, that has been made abundantly clear to me, and I'm sure all of you as well. There is very little, certainly, that we can do on the council, but I believe that water and sewer departments can do in general. So it leaves us again in this situation where communication is sort of the only tool we do have. So thank you to Councilor Strezzo for bringing this. And this item is referred to the Equity Committee for a public hearing.
Item 4.2 is an order by Councilor Strezzo, that Item Number 24-0417 be discharged from the Committee on Housing and Community Development and sent to the Committee on Public Health and Public Safety.
Councilor Strezzo.
Thank you. Just as it says, we're going to talk about it over Zoom.
Excellent. That item is referred to the Committee on Public Health and Public Safety.
Item 4.3 is a resolution by Councilor Strezzo, that the administration convene the appropriate departments to discuss the monitoring efforts of the wild turkey population within Somerville and the surrounding regions.
Don't pack up those cameras yet. We've got turkeys next. Councilor Strezzo.
As I often say or scream out the window when a turkey is blocking the road, "Don't you know how delicious you are? What are you doing?" I hope this is my only turkey order. Can you please send it to Public Health, Public Safety?
We'll send this to the Committee on Turkeys.
We don't have one. Yet, yet.
Public Health and Public Safety.
Thank you.
Item 4.4 is a resolution by Councilors Wilson and Strezzo, declaring April 6th through 12th as the Week of the Young Child.
Councilor Wilson.
Mr. President, I learned this week from our city clerk that this council can declare, but we cannot proclaim. It turns out proclamations are the exclusive domain of the mayor. #Charter Reform. No, but seriously, with our society increasingly leaving families to figure it out themselves, I do think it's important to explicitly affirm our support as a city for families and to pledge to do better by our youngest residents, their families, their caregivers, and their educators. The Week of the Young Child is an annual observance that provides us with that opportunity. I want to thank Councilor Strezzo for cosponsoring this and for her work on the community cabinet. I realized on Monday, as I put this resolution together, that apparently I'm in total denial about how quickly my kids are growing up when I realized my youngest, now age nine, technically no longer qualifies as a young child. Times wild that way, I guess. When I see a parent in a baby stroller, it just feels like yesterday, when I was in their shoes. Unfortunately, we've gone off the rails as a country, and nowhere is that clearer than how we are failing families as a society. Somerville used to be a working-class, urban-bedroom community. And if you talk to someone who grew up here when that was the case, they inevitably talk about the human connection in the community, how people looked out for one another and were there for one another. I'll credit the current and previous mayors with recognizing the need to give families a reason to stay in Somerville and investing in parks and playgrounds and our school system. I want to see that investment continue and expand by ensuring that working families don't have to stress about what their school-aged child will do between dismissal and the end of the workday. I want to see us create more community spaces and uses in this city. I want to see us expand our parks and rec programming offerings in a way that meets the needs and interests of the community. I want to see us offer truly universal, full-day, early childhood education that working families need. And since kids can't drive, I want to see us continue to subsidize their public transit passes and to build bike and pedestrian safety infrastructure that allows kids to move around and explore our city safely. And I really want to see us create big numbers of three-plus-bedroom, affordable units, ideally as part of social housing that Somerville families desperately need to avoid being displaced to the suburbs. So yes, for all these reasons, let's reaffirm our support for young children, their families, their caregivers, and educators this week. Thanks.
Thank you. That item is approved.
Item 4.5 is a resolution by Councilors Wilson and Burnley, declaring the month of April 2024 as Fair Housing Month.
Councilor Wilson.
Mr. President, another resolution. April is National Fair Housing Month. I want to thank Councilor Burnley for cosponsoring this resolution, for collaborating on some of the language in here. I want to take this opportunity to thank the Somerville Fair Housing Commission for the work that they do here locally to educate our city about fair housing and to support our municipal government's work on this. Over the past year, our fair housing commissioners have maintained a regularly updated social media presence, providing fair housing facts, put on fair housing events, like two this month in conjunction with the Somerville Public Library. There's a tenant screening on April 16th and a book discussion on The Color of Law on April 27th. They volunteered with the Anti-Displacement Task Force, and they've conducted fair housing candidate questionnaires for mayoral and city council candidates designed to increase the knowledge of fair housing among candidates while bringing public awareness to the candidates' commitments to fair housing. I know I spent time on one of those as a candidate this past year. So I commend our fair housing commission for their work, and I challenge all of us around this horseshoe and in our community to rededicate ourselves to ensuring that Somerville is a fair housing city. Thanks.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, that item is approved.
And that will bring us to the next item that the council will take out of order, which is Item 10.9, an officer's communication from the city solicitor requesting to appear in executive session to discuss Item 24-0323, the mayor requesting approval to enter into a contract with outside legal counsel for the appeal of the Superior Court judgment against the Somerville redevelopment authority in the matter of 90 Washington Street property at Cobble Hill.
For the reasons just mentioned, I move to go into executive session.
And on that motion, Councilor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Councilor Davis.
Yes.
Councilor Wilson.
Yes.
Councilor Saito.
Yes.
Councilor Scott.
Oh, yes.
Councilor Mbah.
Yes.
Councilor Burnley.
Aye.
Councilor Klingon.
Yes.
Councilor Strezzo.
Yes.
Councilor Pineda Newfeld.
Yes.
Councilor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
With all councilors in favor, that is approved, and the council will recess for executive session.
All right, we will reconvene in regular session after this.
Let's call this meeting back to order.
And this is roll call. Counselor McLaughlin.
Here.
Counselor Davis.
Here.
Counselor Wilson.
Present.
Counselor Said. Counselor Scott.
Present.
Counselor Mbah. Counselor Burnley.
Present.
Counselor Klingon.
Present.
Counselor Strezzo.
Here.
Counselor Panetta Newfeld.
I'm here.
Counselor Ewan Campan.
Here.
With nine counselors present and two absent, we have a quorum.
Excellent. So I'd like to waive the rules to take 10 dot 10 out of order. Can you please read that one?
Of course. Item 10 10 is a request of the mayor requesting the adoption of an order of taking for the acquisition of the parcels located at 508 to 512 Columbia Street for the creation of a new park and open space.
Okay, so this is an item that I was informed there is seeking immediate consideration. And I wanted to hear if there's staff that could speak on it before that comes up. Director Galligani, welcome.
Thank you, counselors. So this item, we are seeking approval tonight, if that is possible. It's not absolutely critical. This was an item that was previously discussed a few nights ago at the Finance Committee. We had lengthy discussion about the funding for this taking, but now we're here to talk about the actual taking. This is a project that we've been eyeing for some time. It is a project that we identified in a planning process about five years ago and thought that this was part of a site that could be assembled that would be an outstanding location for a public park. A couple of years later, the lab building at 495 Columbia Street, which is immediately across the street, was secured and developed. Also, with the same ownership as this site we're talking about today, so the Toulouseki family that operates J.A. Toulouseki and Sons Used Auto Parts, they sold their land on the other side at 495 Columbia to be assembled as part of that lab development. We had hoped that that lab developer would acquire this site across the street and make that its public park contribution. That didn't work out. They couldn't come to an agreement. But a couple of years, about a year later, the Toulouseki family decided to, Mr. Toulouse has decided to retire and is interested in selling his property. When we found out that was the case, we reached out immediately and said, hey, we're interested. This is a site that we see as a future public park. We'd love to work with you. So we began a relationship a couple of years ago and said, hey, you know, we're slow, we're deliberate, we're a public entity, we've got to follow all sorts of rules, but we're very interested in acquiring this site that you're willing to sell. And so we've, over the course of years, got to a place where we have decided that doing a friendly taking would be the appropriate approach. And what a friendly taking means is we're using the powers of eminent domain, but we're not forcing the issue. We're not taking property from an unwilling party. This is going to be, you know, it's become an arms-length transaction. We'll agree to do this and use eminent domain as a tool. But we assumed that we would come to a fair price that they would agree to sell it for. So we issued an appraisal and got a sense of what we think the value is. They, at that point in time, a couple of years ago, said their asking price was $6 million. We got an appraisal that said it was worth slightly more than that. We did a second appraisal, as is our policy and practice, so that we make sure that we really have a defendable number in any circumstance. Again, we're fearing unfriendly takings and being sent to court. We want to make sure we're in a good, strong position. So we had a second appraisal done. It was significantly lower than $6 million. And so then we began some negotiations to get to the place where both parties felt comfortable. We had an opportunity to fund this, as we discussed a couple nights ago, partially by some unspent CDBG funds. There's a time limit on that, using that CDBG funds. And so we thought, jeez, let's accelerate the process and make this happen. And it really helped us actually to get to an agreement, a place of comfort on both parties sooner than we expected. So we're here before you tonight. We do have a deadline of the last day in April to make this transaction happen so that we can utilize this 1.4 million of CDBG funds to kind of complete the funding pool for this acquisition. So we would love for you to consider this this evening. I'm available to answer any questions and any follow-ups from a couple nights ago. But we certainly appreciate your consideration.
Okay. Thank you, Director. I assume there are questions from the Ward Counselor and Counselor Burnley. I just have two quick questions also. You mentioned at the beginning that it was originally maybe going to be part of the development, and then that didn't work out. Does this developer still have an outstanding need to provide a public park somewhere else? Or how does this work?
No, that developer decided to make that payment, a payment in lieu of providing the open space. The site was tight, too tight. They didn't want to use 20% of the lot and contribute that to open space, so they instead made a payment, which we said, hmm, we know where we can spend that, or we hope we would spend it across the street, and then the opportunity arose.
Got it. Counselor Scott, then Counselor Burnley. No, Counselor Burnley. No, Counselor Scott.
But I insist. All right. Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate the conversation that happened in Finance last night. Through you, Mr. President, remind us what the payment in lieu was for that 495 Columbia project?
Approximately, through the chair, to the President, approximately $4.6 million.
Okay, so a fair, a fair amount of this cost being offset, at least by that developer contribution. I, you know, I find it to be hard, let's say, heartening, that this is a land acquisition along with the one on Allen Street recently for the vacant houses, hopefully for the purpose of providing affordable housing, that these are becoming friendly transactions as opposed to transactions that invite a great deal of litigation. I am definitely supportive of the creation of open space here, although I think I would be more comfortable with it if I had been approached and involved in this process at all. You know, I know the Toulousekis. This is an area that has been the subject of intensive planning and honestly, intensive conflict in the neighborhood. So it does make me somewhat leery when I see a number this big for a parcel of land that small. But if I go back to it, Mr. President, it was 2019 when I, at this, with this council's support, we took land at the old Legion Post, which was 2.2 million for about the same amount of square feet. And then a number of years later, another taking of land showed us that the value just for dirt in Union Square these days was around 18 to 20 million an acre. And now we have this transaction, just, I think, two years later, showing us that the price of dirt in Union Square has now gone to $24 million an acre. So with that, I do applaud the city's willingness to step forward and secure some green space. It is part of a long-determined plan. I wish we could have gotten it done another way. And I certainly look forward to more transparency from our Planning and Economic Development Department when you have a transaction like this happening in my ward. Thank you.
Counselor Burnley, then Counselor Klingon.
Thank you. Through the chair, I just want to say for my colleagues who perhaps did not watch our Finance Committee meeting last night, which I don't know why you wouldn't, we did talk about this item extensively, which I blame myself for because I spoke up. And we asked plenty of questions about the appropriateness of the space, the potential for unforeseen costs, and about the process of, you know, what it actually takes to make a park. Because what we're doing tonight is taking a, like an auto shop, essentially, that did not a park, buying that space. To turn it into a park, we're going to have to demolish it, rip up the ground, do all sorts of things. So I say that to just point out that this is the beginning of a process that will take the city years to see to its culmination. But that culmination will be, hopefully, people being able to enjoy their community more. People who currently do not have access to green space in this particular area, people who will hopefully call this community home. And I'd say you can't put a price on that, but we are. But it's something that I think is incredibly needed in Somerville and that our residents will very much appreciate. And in our agenda is $4.6 million that the Finance Committee approved for allocation towards this goal. So just want to say, if we were to vote against this, I don't know what that would do to the money we already said we were going to appropriate to it. We'd have a little bit of a, have to go a little back and forth on our own commitments, although nothing gets finalized before it goes to the full council, of course. But we asked some appropriate questions, got some good answers, and taken a leap of faith that we can actually do something with the city and, as I like to say, buy it back. Buy back Somerville. Thank you.
Counselor Klingon.
Mr. President, thank you. Through you, just in this conversation, I just had a question based on what Counselor Scott had said. Because, you know, I'm fine with, we had this in committee the other night, but with that property on Somerville Lab, the one that, it was like the old...
217.
What do you mean, American? Yeah, so did we end up paying more than the 2-point-whatever million? Like, was there a pro-Tonto situation?
Through the chair, I trust that estimate, 2-point-something. And as is typically the case when we take something, it's being litigated. So we're likely going to have to defend that price. The former owner is seeking more money than what we paid them.
Okay, so that particular price will be, okay, that's, all right. Well, that's all. Thank you.
Right. That was not what we call a friendly eminent domain. Additional questions, comments? Makes me want to get friendly eminent domain tattooed on the knuckles. Now, in a certain way, I mean, this is, this is sort of how the system is supposed to work, right? We get an in lieu payment, and we have a place to put that money right away. Seeing no further discussion, Ward Counselors out of the room. I'd like to call a vote. All right. On the item before us.
On the order of taking, item 24 dash 0533. Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Aye.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Panetta Newfeld.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
With all counselors in favor, that item is approved.
Excellent. Thank you, Director.
Thank you so much.
To our regular order.
Indeed. And that brings us to item 6B, a report of the Committee on Finance, meeting on April 9th, 2024.
Counselor Wilson.
Mr. President, the Finance Committee met Tuesday, April 9th, for 2 hours and 32 minutes with four of five members present due to Counselor Said being away. Our lengthy agenda had 34 items on it, but 15 of those were either minutes or FY '25 budget priorities items that we disposed of in mere minutes at the beginning of the meeting. We kept in committee an order of mine and Counselor Scott's to discuss the bids for two water and sewer contracts. We're going to be taking those up at our May 7th Finance Committee meeting, where we can have both Director Allen of Procurement and Contracting Services and Director Vidalas of Water and Sewer with us for that discussion. We unanimously recommended that you approve tonight the discontinuance of Palmer Ave to expand the Glen Park Community Garden, time-only extensions of contracts for the Healy Schoolyard and sewer flow metering, and I'll note, this is for the monitoring of combined sewer outflow and not connected in any way to the water and sewer metering and billing issues that we discussed earlier tonight. A $450,000 appropriation for the Western Washington Street Mobility Improvements due to happen later this year. Two CPA funding items, one for the Kennedy Schoolyard Design, another for the Summer Museum Asset Preservation. A roughly $1.9 million federal grant for window replacement in the Mystics, a very exciting given their location next to both interstate and state highways. So thank our congressional delegation for that one. A roughly $375,000 state grant for the renovation of Henry Hansen Park, something we've heard a lot about with various requests over the years, but we're informed this should be the final one, and that park should be set to begin that renovation process. A state grant of around $77,000 for council on aging programming, a roughly $132,000 state grant for converting the Argenziano school to LED lighting, and a $79,500 state grant to cover some police overtime. We discharged, without recommendation, request from the mayor to enter into a contract with outside legal counsel for the purpose of appealing the judgment against the Summer Redevelopment Authority regarding the taking of 90 Washington Street, for which purpose this council entered into executive session earlier. We'll need to sever this item to vote on approval, so I, so move. But we don't need to. I stand corrected. Is that because the, through, all right. Excellent. You learn something every night.
Don't step to the clerk.
Clearly. The bulk, then, of the meeting was spent on three groups, two items each, the last of which I'll be coming back to shortly. It's going to come back up tonight. The first one is the one that we just heard about, two appropriation requests totaling $4.6 million in developer open space payments that have been sitting in stabilization funds and are being put toward the friendly taking by eminent domain of 508 and 512 Columbia Street that you just heard about. To reiterate, the total price tag we're paying for this is $6 million, 4.6 million essentially coming from the developer, with the remaining 1.4 million coming from the community development block grants that need to be spent. There was a really good discussion on this. Committee members voiced their support for creating more open space in our city, asked questions and expressed concerns about potential legal and financial obligations around remediating pollution that might be discovered post-purchase on the site, and ultimately settled on the upside of green space creation over the downside of those risks. I'll say I saw city counselors performing their duties extremely well and representing the interests of the people of the city who elected us to do exactly that. It can look a little weird to seeing people process information in real time and weighing risks like that, but I thought it was a good night for the committee, and I thought it spoke highly of the people on that committee. So ultimately, we did recommend unanimously that you approve these two twin appropriations of 2.3 million tonight. And I'll note that this is for the aforementioned order of taking that we just approved on tonight's agenda. We also got an extensive and excellent update from our Director Hartke of Grants and Director Satin Hernandez of the ARPA team. We did learn that recent guidance from the U.S. Treasury indicated some greater flexibility about the obligation of ARPA funds that will make it easier and less stressful for us to expand our full allotment of ARPA funds and reduce the chances that any of those get returned to the Treasury. I believe Director Bing mentioned that at one point tonight during his presentation in the previous meeting. For example, we heard how there's now guidance on how to reobligate funds that had been under contract prior to this December 31st deadline, you know, if that contract had worked or to not happen for whatever reason. So that's good news for us as a city. We learned more than anyone probably ever expected about Munis. That's our municipal enterprise resource planning software that does financial record-keeping. We heard about the extensive and extended reporting and wrap-up process that's going to be required into 2027 on the ARPA side after the final deadline for expanding those ARPA funds is passed. But the big headline, for me at least, was that the Atreus Health Equity Foundation announced on February 28th, I'm stealing Counselor Burnley's thunder here, that they are committing up to $5.5 million in funding to RAP Medical Debt to purchase and forgive the medical debt of everyone in eastern Massachusetts who meets RAP Medical Debt's criteria of either earning below 400% of the federal poverty line, that's currently $60,240 a year for a single person, or $124,800 for a family of four, for example, or anyone having medical debts exceeding 5% of their annual income. We were told this news came with no advance warning to the city or our ARPA team. So this thing that we wanted to happen is going to happen, and we're not going to have to pay a cent for it as a city. A very happy ending indeed. Now, if only we could stop saddling anyone with medical debt at all, but that's another story for another time. The final thing we spent a decent amount of time on is one that's going to come up again tonight, the acceptance of the $24,150 Shannon Grant for youth violence prevention and the corresponding transfer of $8,050 from the Police Professional Services Overtime Account to cover our 25% partial match required for the grant. We heard from Director Delmonico of the Police Department and Legislative Liaison Carrizo that this grant once again will be used for youth violence prevention. that this grant once again will be used for youth violence prevention programs like youth sports, the annual basketball tournament, and workshops and dialogue sessions with at-risk youth and their families, as well as hotspot patrols in areas experiencing firearm violence. The committee deadlocked 2-2 on a vote to recommend this one, so I will move to sever the item so we can take that up for a full vote as a council tonight. And with that, I ask that you accept this committee report. No? Sever.
On the motion to sever that item?
On the motion.
Oh, let the record show Counselor McLaughlin is recused from all this.
On the motion to sever two items, item 24-0332 and 24-0333, from the Finance Committee Report of April 9th. Counselor McLaughlin is recused. Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Aye.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Pineda Newfeld.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
With 10 counselors in favor and one recused, those two items are severed and are now before the council.
On those items, should we read them?
Yes, we can indeed, and you are welcome to take them up together if you wish. Those items are... Here we go. Item 24-0332, requesting approval of a transfer of $8,050 from the Police Department Personal Services Overtime Account to the Police Department Special Items Grant Match Account to fund the Metropolitan Mayor's Coalition Community Safety Initiative Shannon Grant Match. And 24-0333, requesting approval to accept and expend a $24,150 grant that requires a match from the Metropolitan Mayor's Coalition Community Safety Initiative to the Police Department for Youth Violence Prevention.
All right, so on these two items, as Counselor Wilson explained, there were four members in attendance. These came out 2-2. So now they're before us. Is there anyone wishing to deliberate? I'll be voting for them. That's me deliberating. Anyone else wishing? Shall we call the roll?
That's the next step. On items 24-0332 and 24-0333, Counselor McLaughlin is recused. Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
No.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
No.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Pineda Newfeld.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
With eight counselors in favor, two opposed, and one recused, those items are approved.
Excellent. And there's some other roll calls before us now?
And next will be acceptance of the Finance Committee Report of April 9th, 2024. We can, I believe, have Counselor McLaughlin back for this. I think it was just those two items. So give me...
And, Mr. President, can I now ask the USF to the committee report as submitted and move away the readings of items 7-1 to 7-10, 10-11, and 10-12? The clerk knows about this. And ask that these be sent to Finance. Thanks. And the clerk knows about all of that.
Those items are approved. I'll just say, Counselor Burnley, in science, when someone does your idea before you achieve it, it's called getting scooped. I think that's what Atreus did.
Hey, let me, I...
On the committee report, Counselor Burnley.
Through the president, let me just say, thank you, and you're welcome. My plan worked. We can, we can relieve medical debt. We can do more as municipalities and governments and in partnership with our health system, in this case, Atreus Health Foundation. As many of the members of this council know, I've been talking about relieving medical debt for over a year now, through great frustration of trying to collaborate with the ARPA team and this administration in order to make sure that the roughly 6,000 residents who apply are eligible for this program have their medical debt relieved. I am extremely gratified to see that it is moving forward in some form, although my joy is tempered by the fact that our city did not, did not, take the opportunity to lead on this front, when we absolutely hadn't many opportunities to do so during the first two years of having ARPA funds. But to Counselor Wilson's final point about, if only we could just not have medical debt in the future, we can, there are ways forward to permanently ensure that our residents do not have medical debt. Without ARPA, we could, as a community, say that we want to establish a stabilization fund where every two years, five years, a chunk of money would come out of it to relieve the medical debt of residents in our city who make below 400% of the federal poverty rate, which would be by far one of the most impactful programs the city has ever attempted and cross so many lines of marginalization and impact so many people's lives positively, from folks who are documented, undocumented, from folks regardless of their race or religion. We can say that healthcare is a human right, and people shouldn't have to go bankrupt because they got sick or got hurt or just went in for a checkup. And I will be following up on this. So please know that when you have constituents who get that letter in the mail that says that their $500 or $2,000 of debt is wiped out without them having to fill out a single piece of paperwork, that we can provide that same relief to people in perpetuity for an extremely low amount of money. And I am very committed to seeing this community move forward on that project. So just want to say that.
Thank you. Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. I applaud the good counselor at large for this effort. I think his heart's in the right place, but for me personally, to me, medical debt isn't real. The best way to get rid of it, let it go to collections, and then eventually it just disappears. Don't ever spend a dollar on my medical debt, because I, it's not real to me, and I don't, I just ignore medical debt. So pay my rent instead of my medical debt. Thank you.
Very interesting deliberation. On the committee report.
On the committee report, Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Aye.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Pineda Newfeld.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
With all counselors in favor, that committee report is approved, and that does put several items before the council.
Bodorama.
The first of which is the item that was discharged without a recommendation, so this does not require a roll call vote, but it does require action from the council, and that is item 24-0323, approval to enter into a contract with outside legal counsel for the appeal of the Superior Court judgment against the Somerville Redevelopment Authority in the matter of the 90 Washington Street property at Cobble Hill.
Placed on the table for approval.
Perfect. Yes. And then there are, let's see, four items requiring a roll call vote, but we can do it in two. So we'll start with the discontinuance of Palmer Avenue. This is item 24-0081. On that item, Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Aye.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Pineda Newfeld.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
With all counselors in favor, that item is approved. And then there are three stabilization fund items. Those are items, now I got to find them all, items, 24-0245 appropriating $450,000 from the Traffic Safety Stabilization Fund. Item, item, 24-0, nope, that's not it. Item, I'll find it, I promise. 24-0335 appropriating $2,300,000 from the Open Space and Acquisition Stabilization Fund, and item 24-0336 appropriating $2,300,000 from the Parks Stabilization Fund. So on all three of those items, Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Pineda Newfeld.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
With all counselors in favor, those items are approved. And I do believe I heard some motions from the chair at the end of that committee report. If I could get those one more time.
We waived all the items.
They're the, to waive items 7-1 to 7-10, 10-11, and 10-12, and ask those be sent to Finance.
Those items are so referred.
7, 10, and 12. Wonderful. And that brings us to the next item, which is item 6C, a report of the Committee on Legislative Matters, meeting on April 2nd, 2024.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The committee did meet on April 2nd. We had, eventually had all members present, other than Counselor Scott, who was attending a neighborhood meeting. We discussed a couple of different, a couple of different items. The first primary discussion, which actually is an item that we will have a vote on following this report, is an amendment to the ordinance, ordinances establishing the Water and Sewer Department. And there was actually originally two proposed amendments submitted by the administration. The first one, the administration requested that we place that on file, because they're going to actually get, looking at some additional changes to that, but want to make sure they get it right and spend some time to do that. So they'll be resubmitting something for the first, the first item. The second set of amendments contained the more substantive changes. So the bulk of the actual, you know, changes that you see in, actually in both of these initially, were just to bring the ordinances up to speed to reflect reality. So a few years back, we established a Water and Sewer Department as a separate division for DPW. As you obviously said, there's a director and not a commissioner or superintendent. And so there's language changes just to the ordinance to do that. The change in the ordinance that is before us, that is still before us, that we will, that was recommended to be approved, includes acknowledging that there's a Water and Sewer Fund, the, the, the Fund, what's the name of the Fund?
Enterprise.
Thank you.
Enterprise.
Enterprise Fund, it's late. There is now a Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, so the ordinance now reflects that. It clarifies that the waters, Water and Sewer build on a tiered rate based on the usage, that, again, this is all things that have been happening. It does also, as was the good counselor at large mentioned earlier in relation to a different item, it allows billing to happen on a monthly schedule rather than only a few times a year. That, my understanding is that that won't happen just yet, but they're working towards that. And so this changes the ordinance to allow that, which, you know, has multiple benefits, including obviously giving people more frequent view of their water usage, at least as long as the meters working. And then the final, and really most important piece of, part of this change, is to change the dates for the hearing, for, to disclose the Water and Sewer rates, and to notify the city council. So I went through all of these with the administration prior to the meeting, and I had a, you know, good conversation with Director Vidalis, as well as the administration. And I pushed back a bit, because, you know, the timing of the Water and Sewer hearing has been an issue in the past. We've already amended this, this exact provision to address some concerns that were raised the last few times that we've had issues come up with Water and Sewer. And, you know, as I really push on what the rationale here is, and the explanation was that, as of right now, that the current ordinance provides that the public hearing will be in the middle of May, that there'll be, and then there's a two-week, two-week timeframe after that to, or two weeks prior to that to inform the council, then there's a public hearing, and then they have to make a final decision with two weeks after that. The problem is that historically, the debt service hasn't been a significant part of the calculation, because we haven't borrowed a lot of money to do a lot of work. This is how you end up with 150- to 200-year-old sewer systems. We are now, as we all know, trying to address that problem, the, doing the work to replace the aging and failing systems, and following good financial practices, using borrowing to fund that. So we have a lot more debt service. And what we were told was that the, the information from the federal government, the actual interest rates, doesn't come out until mid-May. And so they essentially said, we'd be happy to, you know, continue to follow this timeframe, but the reality is, it's quite possible that we would then have to significantly change the rates, come back and say, well, now, now we have the information about the debt service, the interest rates, and so they didn't want to do that. So the intent here is to, is to allow the time for, you know, allow the information to come out about interest rates, get the number right, so that the first time we go to the public with it, it's accurate, it wouldn't have to be changed. I raised the concern that this pushes us into budget season. This is something we've talked about significantly in the past. I encourage them, the administration, to speak with the council president, as well as the Chair of Finance. My understanding is that they had those conversations. They did note in the, in the, in the meeting that one of the, one of the things that came out of the conversation was that the Water and Sewer conversation during the budget process will happen later, so that there's more time to sort of digest and process all this. And so we're not, you know, we're not bumping up against new information. But I wanted to, I raise all this because I wanted to make sure that, you know, we have an opportunity to talk about this. Obviously, the cost of, you know, the issues we heard about this evening are largely not related to the rates changes, although that's certainly a piece of it. But, you know, this has been an issue that has come up several times in my tenure here, and I want to make sure that I flag that as sort of the primary change and the rationale for it. I believe that we have Director Vidalis available to answer questions, if there are any, and we have our liaison here as well. And, and so I will, I'm actually going to move to sever this item, because there were two sort of drafting changes that were also made during the meeting. One was to just to change superintendent to director, and our eagle-eyed policy analyst noted that we also should, we should add to that proposed amendment the word commissioner, that appears incorrectly in the current ordinance and should also be director. So I'll, I'll move to sever this item so that I can move to, I guess, what's the easiest way to do it? To then move to additionally change the word commissioner to director.
Yes.
Yeah. So...
To sever 24-0324?
Yeah, and then I do have, I continue on the report, but do you want to do that now?
That's the rule of counsel.
Let's move to sever this item now, and then I can finish the report, and we can bring it up.
On the motion to sever.
On the motion to sever item 24-0324 from the Legislative Matters Committee Report, Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Aye.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Pineda Newfeld.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
With 10 counselors in favor, none opposed, and one absent, that item is severed and is now before the council.
Okay, thank you. So just finishing on the report of the committee, we also talked about the amendment for, to create a safe streets ordinance. This was introduced by Counselor Burnley. It has been in committee for a while, because I was informed as chair that Counselor Burnley, Policy Analyst Salisbury, as well as many other folks around, as other folks, Director Ross and others, have been working hard to make some changes and improvements. And so we, we were provided a, a, a new version of a proposed amendment to this at the meeting. We did vote to replace that with the older version. The, the minutes that are in the report are very thorough as the discussions. I would encourage folks to take a look at that. But, but more importantly, the point I want to make is that the, that new version of the, of the proposed amendment is now before the Committee. It is, I believe, attached to the item, should be attached to the item. So folks, but I encourage folks to take a look at that, and if there's any feedback, obviously, you know, reach out to, to me, or if members of the public, reach out to, you know, we can send, send notes to the city council, to me, to whomever, so that we can get that feedback. It, Counselor Burnley noted that there's still some, some, you know, some questions that we want to work through, so we're going to come back to that. We still got some work to do in committee, but I just wanted to flag that item because the, the initial submission is now moot. There's a, there's a new proposal that I want to just make note for, make a note for people to take a look at, if you're interested in that topic, and we, as always, will value everyone's input. So with that, I request that the report be accepted as submitted.
The committee report is laid on the table for approval.
And could we take up the item that is now before the council, Mr. President?
Very well.
And on that item, so this, this is the amendment to the Water and Sewer Ordinance provisions that, that were noted, that were discussed in the committee report. And there were two votes taken during the committee to, one to replace the word superintendent with director, and the other to just correct a, a chapter reference to Massachusetts General Laws chapter reference. I'd like to also move to replace the word commissioner with the word director in the ordinance proposal.
Do you have that?
Do I have what?
Do you have that document? I was just going to put it on the screen for, for understanding.
I see.
I am not 100% confident in what you just said, so my apologies.
So I, so I apologize. So let me, let me talk more slowly. There are two, two votes that were taken in committee that are very clear, and I'm making, I'm moving to, to make an additional amendment to the proposed amendment. That is to replace the word commissioner with the word director throughout the ordinance proposal. And as I noted earlier, that's simply because we don't have, we neither have a superintendent nor a commissioner anymore, we have a director, and this is something that happened a few years ago, it's just the ordinance didn't get updated to reflect that. So I, I, I'd like a vote, I guess a vote on that motion to amend the proposed amendment, and then if we could entertain any discussion on the proposed amendment as a whole after that, if that makes sense, Mr. President?
On the amendment to the amendment.
On the motion to amend by replacing commissioner with director, Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Aye.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Strezel.
Yes.
Counselor Pineda Newfeld. Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
With 10 counselors in favor, none opposed, and one absent, the motion is approved, and the item as amended is now before the council.
On that item, Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, I just had a couple of questions to the Chair. Did you, did you say Director Vidalis is available tonight for questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, correct, okay. No, my, my question was just on that. Chair Wilson, through you, Mr. President, what, I don't believe Director Vidalis was available on Tuesday night for Finance Committee, is that right?
Through the President, we did not explicitly, beyond the order naming him, we did not, when I met with staff, I did not explicitly request Director Vidalis be there, so I want to set that record straight.
Okay, okay. Well, I just, just wanted to be clear. Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, or Mr. President, I get this, I appreciate the rationale, but ultimately, the ability to manage this process has been fumbled so repeatedly over the last several years by our Water and Sewer Department, sometimes not holding the required hearing, not advertising the required hearing in time, to the point where we have had to amend the rules of the city council, we have had to pass exemptions, approve exemptions to our own laws in the city to accommodate these failures to operate. And so we are extending the deadlines on this, which ultimately just shortens the amount of time that the public can consider, and this body can consider, the information. So, no, Mr. President, I, I'm all set on that. I think we have heard tonight a great deal of discussion about how our Water and Sewer Department seems to have a hard time calculating money. So I think having enough time to review, review this is appropriate. So I'll be voting against this amendment. Thank you.
Further discussion? Counselor McLaughlin.
I'm intrigued, and I just want to clarify what the consequence of voting no would be on this.
Counselor Davis?
Well, aside from the, the procedural effect of it not being able to be considered again for whatever the period of time in the rules is that I'm forgetting at the moment because it's late, the, you know, substantively, as I noted, the, the bulk of these changes are simply to reflect the reality that currently exists, that there is an enterprise fund, that the, the superintendent of Water and Sewer is actually called now the Director of Water and Sewer, et cetera. There's the dates, there's correcting, the, the ordinance currently states that the rates are established on a uniform rate per 100 cubic feet, that's not true, they are on a tiered rate, so this would correct that. And as I said, it also would, it also allows us to move to a 12-per-year billing cycle, you know, for the reasons I noted, to, to provide more transparency to the, to the rate user, to, to the user, and as well as other, other benefits, I guess. So the impact of voting no would be to not do those things.
And I would just add, Counselor McLaughlin, I, I'm not the judge of what's controversial, but you know, the, the thing that I think is raising people's interest is pushing back the date at which the, the rates are shown to the public, and, and there's a public hearing, by two weeks, with the idea being that currently, the rates have to be given to the city council before they have all the information to set the rates, and so there's this, like what we had last year, where there's a lot of back and forth, and then they come back with the, so that's, I'll just say, as one committee member, that's, that's why I voted to support it, because I think it, they should have all the information that they use to set the rate at the time that they present the rate. It pushes it into budget season, which will make it complicated, but it's already really complicated, so that's why I supported it in committee.
And through you to Counselor Scott, is it the date is the part in particular that you're concerned about, the change of date?
With the President's permission, yes. I thank the President for bringing up that the first time rates were presented to this council, they were not accepted, right? And they had to go back to the drawing board. Great, I want to give them all the time they need to go back to the drawing board. Counselor McLaughlin, my, my complaints about the compression of budget season are longstanding.
So I guess, for me, it's like I hear those concerns. I agree with almost everything else, I think. Can we separate the amendments here? It sounds like there are multiple chair, or can we vote separately on the actual dates as opposed to the other amendments? I don't mean to complicate it, but if that's the only thing that's concerning, because I do agree that last year, we, there was thorough debate about the rates well before our final vote, and I, even then, I felt like I was pressured to vote on something that I was, that I could have used more time on.
One procedural path forward, if we want to separate these issues, would be to send it back to committee and, and work it out there, and have it come back as two separate things, I assume. I would personally recommend that we do that, rather than try to figure it out on the floor tonight, but I'm one counselor. We could also figure out if there's a majority of counselors that want to vote on it right now, I mean, we could do that also. Counselor Strezel?
Thank you. Yeah, I do support the idea of a 12-month billing plan, and so I do support, through you to Counselor McLaughlin, I do support that, but I'm totally, I, I would, I would love the concept of, of sending, or severing, if it's a possibility, or of sending back to committee to, to tweak the, the timeline, or not, if that makes sense.
Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't agree with sending it back to committee, we had a discussion in committee, it was voted to recommend approval, that's why I arranged and requested that the director be here. If, if counselors have questions, I'm sure he'd be happy to answer them, I think we should make a decision and vote yes or no. I, I support it because I don't think there's any logic in us submitting something to the public that we know is at least quite possibly going to change, if not, if not likely. To me, that'll only create more distrust and chaos, and, and while I, as I said, share the concerns, and that's why I'm raising it, that this compresses, this, and I also share the frustration, that Counselor Scott noted about this, the inability of this, this department historically to get things right. I, I just, to me, given the explanation that was given about the interest rates, I, I think we're creating more confusion and distrust by telling the public one thing, knowing that we're going to have to change it in a week. And I don't know what we're going to accomplish in committee, we had this discussion committee, we're here now, the director's here, if there's questions, ask him to make a decision and vote.
Counselor Wilson?
Thanks, Mr. President. Through you to Director Vidalis, what would the effect be if the decision on proposed rates dragged into the following fiscal year?
Thank you, through you, Mr. President.
Director, are you with us, and did you catch the question?
I am, can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you through you, Mr. President, I do hear you. Pushing the discussion into the next fiscal will affect what the rates should be, whereas we are, we plan to incorporate the new rates, or whatever comes out of them, in time for the next fiscal. So, meaning the longer we go without incorporating the new rates, any increase in revenue that we planned on would be, would have to increase the rates further to compensate for the time, the period lost.
Counselor Wilson?
So, Mr. President, if I'm understanding correctly, then we would just be, the, the cost would be, we'd be shorting ourselves by the extra revenue not realized by the higher rates over the period of time it takes to approve whatever new rates are approved. That doesn't worry me too much. I would say, you know, in this event where we do need to go back to the drawing board on rates, I'm not too worried about the idea of that going into the next fiscal year. It sounds a little messy, but I would prefer that over what we saw this past year, where we had a proposed rate change by the time it actually, when the initial thing came out, before it was actually presented, presented to us, and then we got more news that changed things after that, so given the choice between those two, I'd rather have a later date, and, and just know that if we do need to push back on that, and they have to go back to the drawing board, it's not the end of the world.
Counselor Strezel?
On that point, thank you. Through you to Counsel Wilson, but where we are right now, my concern is that with that decision as a whole, it still includes the, what, three times a year bill cycle that would be compacted with this.
So my understanding, Counselor Wilson, he was speaking in favor of the proposed amendment. With the, the logic being, not to put words in your mouth, being if there needs to be a lot of pushback, and it needs to drag out a couple of weeks past the end of the fiscal year, Counselor Wilson is saying the costs, he characterizes as minimal because that means two weeks of reduced revenue rate. Counselor Mbah?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is maybe to Counselor Davis, or Chairman Davis, because I still want to make sure that I, I, I'm trying to harmonize my thought again, because a lot of things, words are moving around, but I want to make sure that we're on the same page with my understanding, because we, again, a few years ago, we voted to reorganize the financing strategy for seaweed and water. That's basically making these services self-funded, from the fees for service rather than any component of tax revenue. You know, setting up the tiered rate system with separate rates for commercial and residential, and with discounted rates for lower-income household and low-volume users. So the changes, you know, to this ordinance now appear to reflect this structural change, with the preamble language, you know, at the beginning, you know, explaining that the seaweed and water rates will now fund the system fully, and revenues will not be shown to offset against tax revenue, but will, will be accounted for separately as enterprise funds. Is that, you know, like, is that the same conversation, is it in line with what we had?
So Counselor, the substantive issue is whether we change the date that the rates are presented to the public by two, two weeks later.
Doesn't matter.
We voted for it in committee.
Yeah.
Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President, just briefly, yes, Counselor Mbah, this, this is the language we had before in committee, it reflects the reorganization that you noted that happened a couple of years ago, it is simply to make the ordinance accurately describe what currently exists.
Thank you.
In that aspect, the, the dates are a different.
Thank you.
Counselor McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. President, I got the answers I needed. I personally prefer to look stupid asking questions than to vote in, for something that I don't completely understand. Regardless of how I vote tonight, I feel like we're coming to a major confrontation over the water rates this budget season amongst other budget items, and just want to reiterate to whoever's listening that doom and gloom is not going to sway me. I'd like to see that we're actually going to do something to take care of the people who can't afford water rate increases that we did this year, so I'm good for tonight, we can vote.
All right. Let's call the roll.
So this will be on approval first of item 24 dash zero three two four as amended. Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
No.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Strezel.
Yes.
Counselor Pineda Newfeld. Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
With nine counselors in favor, one opposed and one absent, that item is approved. And now on enrollment. Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
No.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Strezel.
Yes.
Counselor Pineda Newfeld. Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
With nine counselors in favor, one opposed and one absent, that item is enrolled. And finally, on ordainment, Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
No.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Yeah.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Strezel.
Yes.
Counselor Pineda Newfeld. Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
With nine counselors in favor, one opposed and one absent, that item is ordained.
Excellent.
And that will bring us to the next item before the council, which is item 711, requesting confirmation of the promotion of Charles D. Richardson to the position of fire captain.
That item is referred to the confirmation of appointments?
Item 712 is a mayor's communication proclaiming that the city of Somerville recognizes the week of April 14th through 20th, 2024, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week.
Excellent. The, due to scheduling issues, the, the administration was not able to have a kind of celebration for this, but this is to, to give our thanks to 911 operators, the, the folks who work in the police and fire telecommunications, and we all certainly support them. Thank you. Yes, we'll place that item on file.
Item 8.1 is an officer's communication from the retirement board notifying this city council of a vote at the May 20th, 2024 meeting regarding a 2024 cost of living adjustment for eligible retirees.
That item is placed on file.
Item 9.1.
Counselor Burnley?
Thank you, through the Chair, I'd like to weigh the readings and move for approval for item 9.1 through 9.28, as well as 10.16.
16, got it.
Those items are referred to license and permits? Approved.
Item 9.29 is a public communication from Chris Duane, submitting comments regarding Urban Forestry Committee recommendations.
I believe that these are relevant to items that could be taken up in legislative matters. Counselor Davis?
Yes, so thank you, Mr. President. So I, I thought about asking for this to be referred to committee, but I, and I'm open to that, certainly, but I, my preference now would just be to place this on file, and the reason being, I, I reached out to Mr. Duane and, and also asked our policy analyst, Salisbury, to, to just touch base with the administration, to sort of see where the process is, and Mr. Salisbury reported that the, this is very much in the works. He participated in a working group meeting just earlier this week, reported
the reason being, I reached out to Mr. Duane and also asked our policy analyst Salisbury to just touch base with the administration to sort of see where the process is. And Mr. Salisbury reported that this is very much in the works. He participated in a working group meeting just earlier this week, reported that things are progressing, the legal department is reviewing and going to make some recommendations. I expressed my intent to sort of move this forward, because these seem very straightforward. Well, they seem like very logical and beneficial changes. There certainly are some that aren't as quite straightforward, that do have impacts, legal impacts, and so I'm glad that Solicitor's Office is already looking at them. But in sort of the spirit of what we've been asked to do, which is to sort of have things a little bit more fully baked before we refer them to committee, I would suggest that perhaps we do that. I intend to, you know, to continue the conversation with Mr. Salisbury and Mr. Duane, and if the administration hasn't submitted something, if at any point it seems like it stalled, I'll be happy to submit it myself, and we'll get going in committee. But it's, we're working on it and getting the refinements made so that we can have something that's a little bit more ready to vote on in committee.
Excellent. Well, thank you to all of you working on this. I read these and agree that this is important to move forward. That item is placed on file, and I'd like to waive the readings of items 10.1 to 10.4. These are submitted in my capacity as a member of the school committee to be referred to our committee on school buildings, and they largely relate to items that came out of, we had our meeting between the parent-teacher associations and the school committee earlier this week, and a number of items came up. Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, briefly on that, so thank you for submitting this. And just so folks understand, because we have this, the special committee, it's a joint committee with the school committee, you know, I wanted to make sure I understood the process for certain agendas, and with the clerk's suggestion, when the, when the school committee had, was it when the school committee has issues that they'd like the committee to take up, of course, it has to be before the council, so we decided it probably made sense for our representative on the school committee to bring those. So, that's why we're following this approach. Certainly, that doesn't mean that we can't all submit items as well separately. The school committee's agenda setting process is a little bit more flexible than ours, but that's why you're seeing it this way, just so, for that context. Thank you, and we're looking forward to taking those up at our next meeting.
And I will add one more piece of pedantic explanation, so that this clerk doesn't strangle me. It is not a joint committee. It is a committee of the city council and a committee of the school committee that meet jointly, much like when we meet with the planning board, and this is remarkably complicated, but we're making it work. There is no such thing as a joint committee unless we...
Make one.
Okay, she's going to strangle me again. We have to change ordinances. Anyway.
That was a perfect explanation, and nobody's getting strangled, I promise.
Thank you.
And the next item is item 10.5, an ordinance by Counselor Burnley that section 9-35 of the Code of Ordinances be amended to fulfill quorum requirements for the Wage Theft Advisory Committee.
Counselor Burnley?
Thank you through the chair. This is mainly in effort to make our ordinance live up to our needs and the reality of quorum. As an ordinance is currently characterized, it includes necessary participants to reach quorum, some of whom don't exist anymore. Our revolution, Somerville, is one of those participants, which does not exist anymore. The New England carpenters do exist, but they exist under a totally different name now. And I would like for our ordinances to actually refer to organizations either that exist or as they are known. The advisory committee has had years of difficulty meeting and having official meetings because of quorum issues. My goal as the representative from the council on it is to bring this committee into fighting shape, to make sure that we're having meetings and make sure that we actually put out an annual report as the ordinance entails, which, as far as I am aware, has never happened. And this is just the beginning of making it a workable and feasible committee. So, thanks. And I'd like for that to go to Legislative Matters.
Thank you. That item is referred to Legislative Matters.
Item 10.6 is an order by Counselor Burnley that the director of parking update this council on the timeline for citywide rollout of safety sticks, including which areas will be prioritized for enforcement.
Counselor Burnley?
This one's pretty straightforward. I'm not even going to talk about it. Let's just send it to parking, traffic, or whatever we call it.
You may think it's straightforward, but the public may not know what safety sticks are.
Okay, I'll talk about it through the chair. So, thanks to me and changing a state law that we accepted, the city is now capable of mailing tickets for vehicles that are parked in bike lanes, bus lanes, and crosswalks. And as a means of capturing these illicit parkers, the city has contracted with a company that puts out these devices, currently only in Davis Square, called Safety Sticks, which take pictures of people's licenses if they are parked in one of the three aforementioned spaces for more than three minutes. That information is then sent to a company who helps write out a ticket, and then the city receives that information and decides to mail the ticket or not. The city has thus far been piloting it. It has not sent any tickets, but in its short pilot period, I think over, let's say, a week, they found over 100 violations, because people park illegally in our streets a lot, and unfortunately, it creates very unsafe situations for pedestrians and cyclists and other vehicles potentially. And my hope is to ensure that we have enforcement of our traffic laws across the city, and that we curb driver behavior to actually conform with what is safe for our residents. And to that end, I'm hoping that we can expand upon this program, put it in, as I understand the plan of Director Renfret to be, the hot zones of violations across the city, and to ensure that no one is put in danger because someone decided it would be convenient for them to just run into a store for, you know, 10 minutes. And, yeah, so with that.
Excellent. That item is referred to traffic and parking.
Item 10.7 is a resolution by Counselor Burnley in support of surveillance procurement transparency.
Counselor Burnley?
This one I will explain through the chair. For my colleagues who are interested in these matters, I would refer you to read this resolution I worked on. It is quite extensive, and it, in my opinion, helps clarify a question that I've had as a member of Legislative Matters about how the city is funding some of the surveillance technology that is in use in Somerville. So, just to take a step back, Somerville is a participant in the Metro Boston Homeland Security Region, which is a Department of Homeland Security and FEMA organization that includes nine municipalities, including us, Boston, Quincy, Winthrop, Everett, Chelsea, et cetera. And we each have a representative on this body. It is a police officer or lieutenant in Somerville who goes to these meetings that are public meetings in Boston. They are record, well, I'm not going to say they're recorded. You can watch them virtually. They are on a camera, and they discuss security matters for their municipalities, in an attempt to deter, prepare for, and respond to acts of terrorism. The funds that go through this body, the AWASI grants, the Urban Area Security Initiative grants that come from the Department of Homeland Security and FEMA, are what the city uses to fund a number of things, but for my purposes, ShotSpotter. And we have had a number of, I think, confused conversations, because we've been confused about where the money's coming from, how, is it Boston who's paying for it? Is it us? Why is, why is our city asking another city for funds to pay for technologies that we're using? After having conversations with many members of this organization, including police officers from across the region, I feel much more aware of how the body operates, and fairly sure that this council has not been fully brought in to communication with our JPOC, our jurisdictional point of contact. And that is unfortunate, because it has actually caused problems for both the city and for this organization, because we need to be in full alignment in order for these funds to be, to come through to our municipality, for them to be approved by FEMA, and in order to best serve our residents. As, as many of you know, I have many concerns with the ShotSpotter technology. A new analysis by Bayou of Massachusetts found that 70% of the alerts in Boston from ShotSpotter led to no evidence of gunfire. One in 10 of those alerts were caused by firecrackers. Around 30 or so percent of that were common noises in urban areas, including garbage trucks, cars backfiring, and in one case, a pinata that was set at a birthday party. The danger of that is when police are alerted to potential gunfire and rush into an area where it is a child's birthday party, they can be creating harmful situations for members of the public. And in some cases, there, that has led to deadly situations. Another attachment to this item is a written statement that we on Legislative Matters received last January 17th, 2013, or 2023, where an SPD officer referenced that between 2022 and 2023, SPD had contacted ShotSpotter 10 times to talk about alerts that ShotSpotter sent that were, could not be confirmed to be gunshots, alerts that ShotSpotter sent that were for gunshots but sent to police to a different area, therefore potentially slowing down police response, and also for a lack of alerts when there were confirmed gunshots that came in through 911 calls. All of these situations are potentially dangerous for a number of reasons. One, because it slows down police response times; in some cases, because they're sending police to areas where no violence is actually taking place; and in other cases, because they're alerting the public of a situation that is not, nonexistent. I believe that we can use these AWASI funds for something far better and enhance our safety protocols. These funds have to be used for something that is tied to a nexus of terrorism, but they can also be used to enhance our 911 capabilities. And if I recall, last year, we were, during budget season, we heard a report from our 911 operators that they have not had an audit of their response times or anything of that nature. We are working as a city on alternative emergency response programs, and that could require diversions from 911, which would require most likely more funding needs, which these grants can be used for. And so, I bring this forward, and I hope to send it to Legislative Matters, so that we can have a conversation about the process by which our council can have better communication and coordination with our JPOC, who sits on the Metro Boston Homeland Security Region, and actually ensure that what he advocates for in terms of funding is in alignment with this council. So, thank you.
Thank you. I neglected to say that on the safety sticks item before us, counselors Wilson and Davis wanted to sign on. My apologies. On this item, Counselor Scott wanted to sign on? Okay. Counselor Mbah also on safety sticks?
Okay.
On this item, before we decide that, Counselor Davis?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. That's actually, the disposition was what I wanted to ask about. I mean, I'm happy to take it Legislative Matters, but I guess that, so the actual, when you get to the actual resolution, there's sort of four subparts, and three of them are very clearly about the financing and the timing and the funding requests, and that seems more appropriate for finance, or maybe public health, public safety. You know, it's, this just aren't the kind of conversations we typically have in Legislative Matters. It doesn't really relate to legislation in terms of the funding aspect of this. You know, certainly, plans regarding future use of ShotSpotter could be relevant in the context of an ordinance to prohibit it, if that were to be forthcoming, but it's not, you don't have that at the moment. You know, the surveillance technology oversight, surveillance technology ordinance has the annual discussion regarding the, the discussion regarding the annual reports, which are still pending. You know, so we, there is an aspect of this that could, the conversation that could happen in Legislative Matters. I just, I worry I won't be able to sort of give the financing aspect of the true attention it deserves in the committee that really isn't geared for those types of conversations.
Counselor Burnley?
Thank you through the chair. The resolution does not mention any numbers, it's not, I mean, it mentions ShotSpotter data, but it's not about just the funding. It's about the process by which we procure these technologies, which the surveillance technology ordinance gives this council a role in that process. And JPOCs are required to kind of forecast out the direction of the city in terms of its surveillance needs and the funding, when they make requests for funding. So, putting aside the actual money and how much we're talking about in money, the basic terms of this are, this person says, for example, and this is a real example, "We need two more miles of ShotSpotter sensors in Somerville." That is a conversation that obviously has implications for the Legislative Matters Committee, because we're the body that would approve that or not approve that. And this, they've had issues in the past where they've advocated for things on behalf of Somerville that this council has not been in favor of, and then that actually creates issues on their side when they have to retract or withdraw requests for funding from the feds. Basically, before they make these requests, we need to be having conversations about the general direction of the technologies that are going to be implemented in Somerville. And that's what the resolve clause is about here. It's not about how much money we're spending. It's about how do we set, help set this direction and be in communication throughout the process, so that we're not just hearing about additional sensors or technologies being deployed after they've already requested the funding and gotten it from this organization that is outside of Somerville.
Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to my colleague for bringing this incredible body of research and work, for all of the, all the legwork you did to follow up on it. The AWASI has been a bit of a, my own personal bugbear for a few years, so I love having all of your skills on the case. I'm eager to work on this, no matter where it ends up, but I would like to express my full confidence and faith in the Chair of Legislative Matters, especially in light of the fact that just tonight, we received an ordinance that addressed directly the timing of financial approvals, as well as the timing of bills going out. So, I have confidence Legislative Matters can handle it, but the disposition is up to, of course, the will of council. Thank you.
Well, it could obviously go to a bunch of different committees. Procurement is in the title. It touches on a bunch of topics. I'm convinced Legislative Matters seems reasonable to have this conversation. If it turns out that it's not working, we'll put it in a different committee, but I think
requesting confirmation of the appointment of Michael Hendricks to the Urban Forestry Committee.
That item is laid on the table for approval.
Item 10.14 is a request of the mayor requesting confirmation of the appointment of Kay Mamo to the Fair Housing Commission.
That item is laid on the table for approval.
Item 10.15 is a new garage license from Mercedes-Benz of Boston at 161 Linwood Street.
That item is referred to license and permits.
And item 10.17 is a public communication from Nolan Carrier submitting comments regarding item 24-0455, an update on police and fire hiring.
That item is placed on file.
And that brings us to the end of the agenda, Mr. President.
Are there late items? Counsel Wilson has one.
Just an announcement, Mr. President. Quick invitation of the public to come out to the city's annual Patriots' Day celebration at Foss Park on Monday, April 15th. Come participate in the Colonial Fair and greet Paul Revere recreating his famous ride from 10:00 to 11:30 a.m. I'll be there. Hope to see you there.
Patriots' Day. Are there other late items?
And there are no further items before the council.
All right. What else is before the council?
So we'll pick a whole bunch of them up off the table. And on approval of items 1.3, 3.1 to 3.2, 4.1 to 4.5, 6C, 9.1 through 9.28, 10.1 through 10.4, 10.6 to 10.7, 10.13 through 10.16, item 24-0016 and 24-0323, plus one late item. And to place on file, items 7.12, 8.1, 9.29, 10.8, and 10.17.
On those items.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Davis.
Yes.
Counsel Wilson.
Yes.
Counsel Said.
Yes.
Counsel Scott.
Yes.
Counsel Mba.
Yes, please.
Counsel Burnley.
Aye.
Counsel Klingon.
Yes.
Counsel Strezzo.
Yes.
Counsel Panetta-Nufeld. Counsel Ewan Campen.
Yes.
With 10 counselors in favor, none opposed, and one absent, those items are approved and placed on file as indicated. And one more on adjournment.
On adjournment.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Davis.
Yes.
Counsel Wilson.
Yes, please.
Counsel Said.
Yes.
Counsel Scott.
Yes, please.
Counsel Mba.
Yes, please.
Counsel Burnley.
Aye.
Counsel Klingon.
Yes.
Counsel Strezzo.
Yes.
Counsel Panetta-Nufeld. Counsel Ewan Campen.
Yes.
With 10 counselors in favor, none opposed, and one absent, this council is adjourned.
Good night, everybody.